Nine thirty. Check, check. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Mic's on? No? All right. There we go. Now it's on. She said, "Hit it." Interesting. Technology. All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order. We're going to begin with roll call.
Sue Rizer-Brandell?
Here.
Sue Rizer-Mendez?
Here.
Sue Rizer-Pacheco?
Here.
Sue Rizer-Quintero? Chairman Magsick?
And I'm here.
All present, thank you.
Next on our agenda is the invocation and pledge of allegiance, and I have the pleasure of inviting up Zach DeRah, who is the Chief Executive Officer of Pavarello House. And I've known Zach for a long time, probably close to fifteen or twenty years. I used to run a nonprofit organization that built affordable housing. Zach, of course, worked at Fresno EOC with their local Conservation Corps members. And then I had the pleasure of working at Fresno EOC as their RME and also running energy programs, and I got to continue working with him. So I was very pleased when Pavarello House picked him to become the new CEO, and I think he's done a fantastic job. I know he loves his Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, and that's why I've asked him here to pray. Pavarello House's mission is believing in the dignity of every person. At the PAV, they work to enrich the lives and spirits of all who pass their way by stewarding the resources made available to them through the divine through divine and community support. So with that, I would ask for everyone to please rise and remain standing after the prayer because we're going to transition to the pledge of allegiance.
Lord God, we give you thanks today. You are the giver of life. You are the source of breath in our lungs. Lord, this is the day you have made, and we rejoice in it. Lord, I pray for these men that you have put at the dais. Lord, may they first know that this position comes from you. Lord, I pray that, just as you taught us, that the greatest amongst us would be servant to all. I pray, Lord, that these men would be known for their greatness of service to others and not just through policies or legislation. Lord, we pray for wisdom for this body. Lord, your word tells us that if any of us lacks wisdom, we can ask you, and you give generously without finding fault. Lord, I pray for wisdom for each of these men today and as they continue to lead in this county. Lord, we pray your blessing on Fresno County. Lord, we thank you for the good things that this county affords us, the beauty. Lord, but we also know that there are many in this community who woke up today not knowing where their next meal would be or waking up not underneath a roof. Lord, there are so many in need in our community, and we pray, Lord, to you because we believe you are not a God of scarcity, but a God of abundance. Lord, we pray that you would pour out all the resources that this county needs to help those who are hungry, who are naked, who are thirsty, Lord, and who are in need of hope. We pray that Fresno County would be known as a place of hope for all people. Lord, we just pray your blessing on this meeting. We pray, Lord, that many decisions will be made today, and most of all, that your will will be done here on earth as it is in heaven. I pray all these things in the name of Jesus Christ. And everyone say, "Amen." I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to this republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one, approve agenda.
Any modifications to the agenda that any board members would like to make? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll announce that item 6.1 is being deleted and will return to a date uncertain.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second. A motion and second. Seeing no further comments, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone in opposition? Not seeing any, so passes unanimously.
We now move to item number two. Approve consent agenda, items numbers twenty through forty-four.
Any board members wishing to poll or comment on the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to poll item number twenty-seven.
All right, we'll poll item twenty-seven. Any other items board members would like to poll? Hearing none, anyone in the public wishing to comment or poll on any of the consent agenda items? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion, bring it back to the board for action.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We'll take Sal's second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone in opposition? Seeing none, it passes unanimously.
We now move to item number three, under the Board of Supervisors, presentation retirement plaque to Victoria Clausen, Social Services, twenty-five years of service.
Very good. And do we have a representative here from the Department of Social Services that can introduce this item, please?
Good morning, Chairman and members of the Board, Delvin Baker, Department of Social Services, Child Welfare Branch, also President and Social Work Supervisor, Justin Johnson, and our retiree, Vicky Clausen. Thank you for the opportunity to recognize Vicky's years of service with the department. We are very pleased with the work that she's done to support our community and our families that we serve on a daily basis. With that, I will hand the presentation over to Justin Johnson.
Good morning. Come on up, Vicky. It is my pleasure to talk about Vicky this morning. Vicky, when I wrote this and put it in your eval, I had no idea I was going to give it in a speech, but I'm glad that we're going to curate it today. Vicky was a social worker or a social work practitioner for over twenty-five years. She has worked multiple task areas, including adoption assessment, K-6 school-based, project access, family reunification, independent living program, CQI, and she also served as the CVRC liaison and an education liaison. She has written countless reports, submitted a bevy of hearing notices. She has interviewed an incalculable amount of parents, kids, foster parents, service providers. She has made referrals for services, visited homes, advocated, collaborated, reunified families, and found placement, permanent placement homes for our children. There is no question in my mind she has always served the needs of our clients. Tautamout to her service to families, she has served DSS with humility and grace, and this is not always easy to do. Thank you. Vicky, throughout your illustrious twenty-five-year career in child welfare, you have consistently demonstrated an unwavering dedication, compassion, and expertise advocating for the most vulnerable members of our community. DSS has marked your long tenure with an extraordinary commitment to the safety, permanency, and well-being of countless children, families, and leaving an indelible mark on our agency and the lives of those you have touched. You have exhibited exceptional empathy, not just in your work, but also in the manner with you interact with your colleagues and peers. You are an invaluable mentor and role model, inspiring the next generation of social workers with your wisdom and unflappable support. Your tireless efforts to create safer, more stable, nurturing homes for children in need have set a high standard within our agency. Your thorough understanding of complex case dynamics and your calm approach to problem solving have led to transformative changes in the lives of many families. Vicky, you will leave behind a legacy of integrity, resilience, and a profound commitment to child welfare. Your retirement is a momentous occasion and a tremendous accomplishment. Your impact will continue to resonate in the hearts and minds of those you have served, your peers, and the community at large. On behalf of your peers, your previous supervisors, the leadership team, and the citizens of Fresno County, we are profoundly grateful for your exemplary service, and we wish your retirement filled with the same love and warmth that you have shared with so many during the past twenty-five years. Vicky, it has been a joy supervising you the last eight months. I do not have enough superlatives to describe your career or how indispensable you have been to me in CQI for the last eight months. Without you, we would not have been able to handle several special project leadership audits to complete. Teaching you, coaching you, and watching you grow into an adroit social worker in CQI has reminded me how much DSS has gained, but also what we have lost. It will be a challenge to replace you as a social worker and impossible to replace you as a person. Thank you for all of your hard work, initiative, and positive attitude. We thank you for the past twenty-five years and wish you well in your retirement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for those kind words. I appreciate it. It has been challenging, but it's also been very rewarding. And I am grateful for the opportunity I've had to be an employee of Fresno County. I'm proud of what I've done, and I'm proud of the agency. Thank you for this opportunity to be acknowledged for what I've done and for the opportunity I've had to be part of Department of Social Services. Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. Board members, any comments?
Vicky, I just want to thank you for the twenty-five years of service. We've never met. I listened to these words about your career this morning, and it's very wonderful to hear that you've engaged our community with such grace. I think a lot of times we forget how difficult that job can be. So I do appreciate your years of service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vicky, thank you also for your years of service. And basically, from what I've heard, you've led by example, and you've really done a lot for the department and for Fresno County. And we really appreciate the time that you've served the county. Do you have any members of your family here today with you?
Yes. My son is here. He is also an employee of the county.
Okay. And what's next on your plate? What are you going to do now?
A lot of bike riding, which is my favorite hobby, reading, spending time with friends and family, and I'm getting involved in a number of volunteer opportunities, continuing social services for free, I guess.
Well, thank you, and congratulations. Great job.
You know, in life, you're measured by what others say about you, not necessarily what you say about yourself. And what your supervisor just shared, I think, was very much heartfelt, and the impact that you've had on this county is going to be missed. I look at the work that social workers do, and I know that right now, in the Department of Social Services overall, there are many vacancies that exist. But you have been with us for over twenty-five years, delivering great services, and we are better for it here at the county. So I'm glad to hear that you like to ride bicycles, and I'm sure that we'll be seeing each other out there on the road at some point. And if I can be of service to you, please feel free to reach out at any time. I would ask for all of you to come forward so we can get a photograph with all of you, as well as your son who's here. And again, we have some items that we would like to give to you. So if you could please come forward at this time, that would be great. Thank you very much. Neither for you.
Hey, Delvin. How's it going, buddy?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We now move to item number four. Under Chairman Magsick, proclaim January twenty-two fourth as National Human Trafficking Prevention Month.
And if we have representatives here from Fresno EOC, I believe that they will be receiving this, so you can step forward at this time. So I think it's very important for us to make this recognition today because as this particular proclamation was put together, some of the statistics about the impacts of trafficking, not only in Fresno County, but around the world, are concerning and just shocking. So I think around the world, there's an estimated fifty million people who are, they get wrapped up and become a part of modern slavery. And so when you think about that, you know, the times that we live in, sometimes the bubble that we live in, we're like slavery was eradicated hundreds of years, or hundred years ago, hundred and fifty years ago. But in reality, there are parts of our world where there's sex trafficking that still takes place, human slavery that takes place. And these are things that are important for us to remember, not only because it's so prevalent around the world, but even in Fresno County. I was looking at some of the statistics and victims of trafficking here in Fresno County. And I believe that Fresno EOC has helped close to two thousand individuals who have been impacted by trafficking in one way or another. And so I thought it was appropriate to have this proclamation today. And I would ask for just a few comments from a representative from Fresno EOC.
Thank you. Thank you for providing your support to us. This is National Human Trafficking Prevention Month, and you guys have stood by us since our inception in two thousand nine. But there's still a lot of work that has to be done. Unfortunately, he did say that we Fresno EOC have served about two thousand. We have a lot of partners here combined. It's a greater number. That would just be our number. Human trafficking is a very complex crime, and that's one of the difficulties of it. It doesn't look one way, and unfortunately, many people still think that it looks one way. It can look so many different ways. We have labor trafficking, commercial sexual exploitation, sex trafficking. And we've served collaboratively, all of us. Anywhere from mothers who are pregnant, to families, to elderly, to people living with disabilities, everywhere we've served clients, Kalinka, Huron, Mendota, Kerman, Ridley. Everybody will tell you that we have served clients and everywhere in our county. Families have been trafficked together, and not all of them choose to report, unfortunately, because of distrust. So we see a lot more than actually the numbers show. We still have a lot of work to do. Ultimately, our goal would be that we would have to serve no more clients and no more victims. But that's still a ways to go. So we really, really, as a team, and I know I have several partners here. If you guys want to come up and make comment, please do so. Really thank you. I thank you for acknowledging January as National Human Trafficking Prevention Month.
Any comments from board members? And what we can do is, if they want, they don't have to speak, but they can stand up here when we take a photograph together if that sounds more appropriate. But anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item? And of course, yes.
So, good morning. My name is Valeria Solorio, and I am the Counsel of Protection and Legal Affairs at the Mexican consulate here in Fresno. First of all, I want to thank the chairman and the board members for giving us this space. I also want to thank all the organizations that are here present that work with the cause of eradicating human trafficking. I would love to point out that the Mexican consulate in Fresno is committed to this cause. And we will continue working in order to, first of all, prevent the occurrence of this atrocious crime and also to help all the Mexican victims who suffer from this. And finally, I want to thank once again the support of the board supervisors and the support of the organization because thanks to it and thanks to the collaboration that we have, we are able and will be able to achieve that goal. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Seeing no further public comment, I will close the public portion. I'll bring it back to the board, and I will move for approval of this proclamation. We have a motion and a second. Any further comments? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone in opposition? It passes. And if the representatives that are here for this item, if you could come forward, I will give you the proclamation now, and we can get a photograph, please. You know, it's amazing what you learn when you call people up for a photo. I thought maybe we were going to have five people here, and we ended up with, you know, many different organizations, great individuals, the chief of police from the city of Fresno, and of course, many different nonprofit organizations from Breaking the Chains to the Fresno Rescue Mission and more that kind of, we all stand in solidarity on this issue. So thank you all for coming out. And it's good to see my good friend, Mr. Yovino, who I've known for over twenty-five years. Great man right there. All right, I'll turn it back over to you.
Mr. Chairman, we will now take up the items pulled from consent. Item twenty-seven pulled by Sue Rizer-Brandell under the Otter Controller, Treasurer, to receive and file the County of Fresno annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three.
All right, and perfect. Oscar is here, and I'll turn it over to Supervisor Brandell first. I don't know if there were specific things that you were interested in looking at or maybe a general overview. So I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, Oscar. So, you know, this is a report that we're just here to receive this morning in the sense it's not a big debatable item. We're just going to receive a report. But in recent months, and we've had a couple of offline conversations, I've heard that Fresno County's in a bad position financially. And I heard it again yesterday, okay? So when I, you know, I knew it was on the agenda today, but I decided to poll it to give you an opportunity to talk to us, you know, maybe at the bullet point level to make some clarifications. What does this report tell us about the financial health of our county? And what can we take? What can the public take away from this report?
Oscar Sia, Otter Controller, Morning Board. So if we could actually turn to page... Can we get this up there or not? Bernice? I think it's, no, we can't. I didn't know it was going to be pulled. So I think they're talking about, so if we go to the financial statements, you follow along if you have it with you. That'll be page fifteen, the statement of net position. So what that statement does is the county does not budget on that particular statement. So they budget on the fund statement, so they go on a year-to-year budget. And this statement here shows all the liabilities and all the assets of the county in the accrual basis of accounting. And what happened in two thousand fifteen is that we had an actuarial determined liability from the retirement system, Fisera, that all governments had to include that liability starting in two thousand fifteen. So in two thousand fifteen, you saw this massive liability on there. And as the years have gone by, the statement of net position, which the county does not use to budget, it's actually gotten better. And actually, in two thousand twenty-three, the unrestricted net position is now seventy-six million to the good. So that just means that the county is being prudent and not going into too many liabilities. And, but the deal with that is, is in Fisera, so as the stock market goes, because they're invested in the stock market, then it goes up and down, and we have to report that, our share or the county's share of that. But one thing to keep in mind is that the county pays their debt each year. So Fisera gives us, the county, this is what you need to pay for contribution on the employer and on the employee's side. They set the rates, and we pay those contributions yearly. The, in perpetuity, so going forward, they're talking about when everybody's going to retire depends on the stock market and things like that. So it's not an indicator of the county's well-being. It depends how well Fisera is doing in the stock market.
Okay. But, and I understand that. But in this year, fiscal year that ended in June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, for the first time in a while, we moved into a net positive position by seventy-six million dollars.
Since two thousand fifteen, correct.
Okay. All right. And that's kind of what I wanted to know and get some clarity on. And I wanted the public to be able to hear from you, you know, so that they can have a better understanding about the numbers.
Well, since I'm up here, I couldn't do this all by myself, so I have a couple of staff members. And I want to thank all of my staff members that helped out in this. So, Anna Dina and Helica, if you would stand up. So they were a big part of, they worked a lot of extra hours, including staff that's not here, present here. They worked a lot of hours to get these, this, the financial statements of the county done. And it's done, it's done on time. We're still going through, this is one of the processes. This is probably the second to the last process. We still have to report that. We're working with county council to get that out to our Emma website to make sure that, based on the bond covenants, that we have to report. And then we'll make it public as far as we'll post it on our website once all that happens. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Oscar, and thank you for recognizing your staff. Thank you, ladies, for the hard work. So, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if any other board members...
I've got a couple of questions, but we'll go to Buddy first.
Mine's real simple. Never give credence to liars with no facts. Just some advice.
And before we get to motions and opening up to the public, just a couple of questions for you, Oscar. Oscar, you've been with the county. You came here, I believe, October of two thousand sixteen.
Correct.
And as I'm currently chairman of the Audit Committee, so the CAFER came to us, I don't know, month, month and a half ago, and we reviewed it, had discussion and approved it. But just some questions I have for you because all the research that I have done, the county's position overall has continued to improve. I would say ever since you've been here, I've not seen a period of time where our cash position or our overall net position has gone backwards when things have been static. And I want to qualify my statement because Fisera has done some things which have actually increased the unfunded liability a little bit without impacting investments, per se. One of those things, I think in two thousand twenty-one, Fisera actually lowered the discount rate to six and a half percent, the assumed rate of return from seven percent to six and a half percent. That would have a negative impact on our CAFER and our net position. And then with the stock market volatility that's there, whenever it hits negative, that also has a negative hit on our net position. But what I've seen happen since two thousand sixteen, even when you factor all that in, the overall position of the county has continued to improve year over year. Is that a safe statement?
That's correct. So where you, where the county budgets and the fund statements, the reserves have been increased every year since I've been here. So that's another prudent thing that the board has done as well.
In two thousand seventeen, I believe our reserves here at the county were nineteen million. I think this budget year, they're eighty million. So we've seen the reserves increase fourfold since you have been here.
That's correct.
So I think kind of quantifying some of this is important because the CAFR, when you look at the Statement of Net Position, a lot of that is based upon actuarial analysis, which is fine. And back to what happened in 2015, the, there were laws that changed that required you to take into consideration the net position of the county, pension liabilities, which didn't exist before, correct?
Counting standard, Gatsby 68.
So, when Gatsby 68 came out, that really triggered a lot of this. So, I think it's always important for apples-to-apples comparisons to be looked at. But overall, since you've been here, 2016 forward, the position of the county has continued to improve, and I appreciate that.
Perfect.
Any other comments?
Oh, just one more. The accuracy of what you do has improved so much. I think we're, what you report out is probably the most accurate for the last 20 years, previous to when you came into the office.
And once again, I have good staff behind me that's doing all the work, and I review it. But I do have good staff working hard, long hours to get this thing done.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to receive this report today.
All right, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, but I need to open it to the public. Anyone else in the public wishing to add comment or additional flavor to this item? Saying none, I'll close the public portion. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It carries unanimously.
That concludes all items that were pulled from consent. We return to your regular agenda. Item number five, under Human Resources, present certificates in recognition of the 2023 Fresno County Cohort Participants Completing the Designated Number of Credits to Receive Their Executive Credentials from California State Association of Counties. Director Hollis McGill is here to present this item, Mr. Chairman. Once she has elaborated, the board may take a five-minute recess to take a picture with the individuals who participated in this cohort.
Hollis, the floor is yours.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Hollis McGill, Director of Human Resources. And with me is Dave McCurry, who oversees our training team. He's been instrumental in implementing this program. So, the California State Association of Counties, the CSAC Institute for Excellence in County Government, is dedicated to the idea of helping counties provide the highest caliber service to our community through leadership development. We are entering our third year of direct partnership with CSAC, and we're thrilled that 29 of the county's leaders have put forth the effort to complete their coursework. We are related to honor their commitment, not just to the coursework, but to their community. So, Paul Dancheck from CSAC is here today to talk more about the Leadership Institute, the partnership we have, and those we are honoring.
Thank you. Good morning, Supervisor, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors. Paul Dancheck with the California Counties Foundation. I want to thank you for your leadership and vision in supporting the senior executives throughout Fresno County as they continue to advance within their careers and seeing professional development as a piece of that equation. Also, I want to thank CAO Nerland, COO Hill, and Director McGill for their leadership in bringing an institute to Fresno County. What we recognize through our work is the importance of continued investment within our teams. Since 1895, the California State Association of Counties have represented all 58 counties throughout the state of California. In 2008, the CSAC Institute was created as an opportunity to invest in the training side of the house. Since that time, we've had 1,500 graduates from across the state. Earning credentials is no easy task. It requires 50 hours of instruction, which requires the investment from the individual, on first identifying the need in their professional growth, and second, from the organization itself, in both time and resources to make it possible. We're excited to go into our third year now of partnering with Fresno to be able to offer our campus here in the central part of the state of a resource not only for Fresno, but for neighboring counties as well. As recognition of the graduates themselves, over 14 departments have sent participants as part of their senior leaders and growth within this space. Topics have ranged from self-awareness, as we're looking at emotional intelligence lenses, to strategic planning, and how do we create our organizations to go to the next level? And with a strong foundation within county services of recognizing those mechanical pieces that also need to be a refresher along the way. Today, we recognize 22 participants who are physically with us today. And if I might, we call their names as a way to celebrate and recognize them. Bellarimo Berber, Sarundi Brianna Grual, Lesby Castro Flores, Jeannie Christensen, Anna Clinton, Selena De La Cruz, Shelley Dorn, Salvador Espino, Bianca Garcia, Joshua Hernandez, Bia Hongwon Van Koom, David Halls, Marcia Hurtado, Melanie Johnson, Christopher Jones, Kristina Kovagovic, James Kuz, Miguel Lopez, Georgina Luna, Romero Magboma, Alma Novero, Elizabeth Ulet, Sam Soho, Angela Stillwell, Thomas Tressler, George Oak, Kay Wang, New Yang, and Ola Yang. I mean, I want to congratulate them for completing the executive credential and earning the degree from the CSAC Institute. I also want to extend my greetings from our CEO, Graham Canous, who wasn't able to join us today. Thank you for your time.
Any comments from board members?
I've just got to speak as a CSAC board member. You know, this has been a tremendous program. I was so happy when we partnered up with CSAC to do this. And that's CSAC's goal, to improve the counties of all their members. And, you know, this has been a great program, and I'm glad you guys are here.
May I respond?
You can.
Supervisor Mendez, just want to thank you for your leadership within CSAC, and certainly those conversations that we've had at outside meetings that continue to reinforce not only the importance of this, but also being able to focus it in on the needs that Fresno County is experiencing, and not just a broad program overall. And that's one of the things that we really pride ourselves on, working with your teams, to be able to make sure that the program is tailored towards where the county is right now and not where we think it should be. But that recognition of where we are, and appreciate those side conversations that we've had.
I would just like to congratulate each one of the names that you read off that participated in the program, probably about a third of the names I recognized. But more importantly, it's just fantastic as people work in Fresno County and neighboring counties, and they want to further their careers, get a better understanding of how counties operate. I think the partnership, as Supervisor Mendez talked about, the partnership with CSAC's been very beneficial to people, especially in the Central Valley, to have a way of understanding the way the game is played. It brings a great benefit to us.
That's right. Thanks, Supervisor. All right, and with that, I believe we're going to take a picture. And so, what I'm going to do with this particular item is, our board is going to adjourn for about two or three minutes. We're going to get a picture, and then we'll be right back. So, Clerk, is there anything that we need to do to-
Nope, you're recessing at this time for two or three minutes.
All right, we will be right back. All right, we are going to reconvene our meeting. I appreciate all of your patience. So, with that, I'm going to turn it back over to our clerk to read in the next item.
Item number six, under Human Resources, recognize the Department of Human Resources on receiving the 2023 Public Risk Innovation Solutions and Management Exemplary Achievement in Government Leadership and Enrichment Award for Innovation and Excellence in the Implementation of Risk Management Programs.
Hollis.
Thank you. Hollis McGill, and with me is Jenny Thompson. She is your risk manager. Now, last July, the CAO's office nominated Human Resources Risk Management Safety Pilot Program for the PRISM Eagle Award that recognizes the advancement and innovation in the practice of risk management within the PRISM's membership pool. So, in October, we were notified that we were awarded this amazing award in the category of Innovation and Excellence in Development and Implementation of Risk Management Programs. So, I'm going to let Jenny here talk a little bit about it.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Jenny Thompson, County Risk Manager. The safety pilot program was developed by risk management to allow employees to play a role in the county's safety program through the submission form and award of grants to address safety issues within their departments. This program operates at no cost to the county as PRISM subsidy funds, which are provided by PRISM based on program participation, and are intended to be used for risk-related programs, products, and services are used to fund the project. The goal of the program is to promote safety while reducing the impact on department budgets. I would like to formally recognize the county's safety team, who are responsible for the daily administration of the safety pilot program. Those include County Safety Officer Mathias Beer Stanberry, Senior Human Resources Analyst Larry Gomez, and Human Resources Analyst Liz Iredondo. These three individuals are tasked with working closely with all county departments to enhance the safety of our employees, volunteers, and the public. I'd like to invite Mathias up to provide a little more detail on the safety program.
All right. Thank you. Good morning, Chairman and Board. Mathias Beer Stanberry, County Safety Officer, Risk Management. Just wanted to give you a little bit of information on the program. Like Jenny said, the employees have the opportunity to apply for these $5,000 grants, up to $5,000, based on their application describing hazards that they may find in their workplace. Then they come up with a solution for it, find out how much that's going to cost, and put in the application for it. So, one of the big things we really wanted with this program was, one, to find a good use for these funds, but, two, to really involve county employees in this process as much as possible, because we know that they have the most expertise on hazards in their job and their workplace. So, just for a couple of examples of some of the applications that we have approved, we've approved things like mirrors for blind spots in offices and warehouses to avoid collisions in those areas, laboratory-grade scales to help measure out pesticides in a safer way with less spillage. We've also done some for motorized stair-climbing dollies to assist bringing heavy equipment upstairs, rather than having employees have to carry that. So, just a few of the applications we have approved. We so far have received 31 applications, and we've approved 14, denied 12, and we have five still pending that we're still reviewing. So, this was initially a one-year pilot program, but we have extended it past that and are keeping it open for the time being.
So, I'd like to introduce Rick Brush, PRISM's Chief Member Services Officer, to present the award.
Hollis, thank you very much. Thank you, Chairman Maggs, and Board of Supervisors. Thank you so much for the time on the agenda. My name is Rick Brush. I'm the Chief Member Services Officer for PRISM. And I'm really excited to be here today, because it's great to be able to share the good work that your staff is doing and making sure that they're recognized for that great work. So, for those of you that aren't familiar with PRISM, let's see, we're a joint powers authority. We have about 2,100 public agencies throughout the state of California, 55 of the 58 counties. And I think most of you probably know, County of Fresno's been a member ever since inception. It used to be called CSAC EIA, now going by PRISM for the last five years. You've been participating in our excess work comp, our property, our general liability program, our cyber programs, and various miscellaneous programs as well. So, that's a little bit about who we are. What the Eagle Awards are, is really this. The Eagle Awards stands for Exemplary Achievement in Government Leadership and Enrichment. As you read that off at the start, it's kind of a mouthful, so I wanted to kind of bring that back. Basically, what this is, is PRISM has put together a program to recognize our members for incredible work that they're doing. What I get to do is I'm incredibly fortunate to be able to share with all of you these great programs and making sure that you're aware of what's going on. And at the same time, the other thing I can do, as a joint powers authority does, one of the things that we want to do is not only provide recognition here, but now I get to share this with the rest of the counties and with the rest of our membership to be able to say, "Look what Fresno did." This is a model program. It's sharing of best practices. The things that they put together, it's basically this. It's see something, say something. When you get into the details of risk management, a lot- a lot of the time, there's clarity and there's common sense in terms of, let's make sure that we help each other manage risk. And that's what they've done a stellar job of. So congratulations to all of you. I'm here because Paul Nerland nominated Hollis McGill for this award for the safety grant award program. So Hollis, congratulations to you and your staff for putting this together. And if I could, congratulations. That's it for me unless there's any other questions. Questions for staff on this one?
All right, well, let's do this. Let's have the four of you come forward. We'll get a quick picture before we go to the next item, or whoever else is here that would like to step forward.
As mentioned at the start of the meeting, 6.1 was deleted and will return to a date uncertain. We now move to item number seven, and the county clerk registrar voters make a finding that it is in the best interest of the county to waive the competitive bidding process consistent with Administrative Policy Number 34 for unusual extraordinary circumstances for continued licensing, maintenance, and support of the election's information management system.
James, the floor is yours.
Good morning, Chairman Magzig and members of the board. I am James Kuss, your county clerk registrar voters, and I'm here this morning to present a contract with DFM Associates Incorporated for your board to consider. The contract will allow the county clerk registrar of voters department to complete our legally required daily responsibilities to manage voter registration in the county and facilitate the conduct of elections for the next five years. The county has used DFM Associates Election Information Management System, or EIMS, for over 20 years. The EIMS is made up of multiple parallel databases and is the bedrock of all election's activities, including, but not limited to, all voter registration activities, voter mailings, candidate filing, jurisdictional tracking and maintenance, precinct creation and control, petition signature review processes, election organization, ballot type creation, and voter check-in and recording of voter participation. There's a lot going on here. County registration systems must integrate with the state election and registration system called VoteCal, and only two such systems are certified at this time to provide these functions, including DFM's EIMS software. In March of 2023, the department began a sole-source contract extension negotiation with DFM Associates for the EIMS software license and support. Our prior contracts with DFM Associates used older county contract templates, and the update to the current contractual template generated extensive negotiations with the vendor. I would like to thank county council, HR Risk, ISDIT, and CAO's office for their support during these extended negotiations. The vendor did not agree to some of the language in the updated contract, but did agree with the updated core contract and to implement some aspects of the language in question, including the implementation of additional cybersecurity insurance, which they have already purchased and provided proof of to the county. With the prior implementation of additional security considerations with all department's software vendors and the actions DFM has agreed to, the department believes the contract will provide for a secure platform to provide these required services for the next five years. I should note that these extended negotiations have resulted in the presentation of a retroactive contract, and I appreciate all parties' patience in implementing this contract. This contract was included in our current year budget and will not result in any increase in net county cost. I've noted that this was a sole-source contract. DFM is the only company that can license and software our current software, support our current software. There's an alternate software available, but there are significant questions about the current status and support of this competing software, sufficient concerns to make a competitive bidding process infeasible at this time. The department is aware of a new product moving through the certification process currently, but certification is unlikely to occur prior to mid-2025. Fresno County Elections has never, historically speaking, been prone to jump in without successful precedent. So we'll be watching closely those counties, if any, that implement a newly-certified competitor to DFM in 2026. The contract before you will place the department in an excellent position to make that evaluation in 2027 for future competitive bidding possibilities. Lastly, I would like to point out that the EIMS software in no way directly is in no way directly connected to our Dominion voting system. Yes, we do take reports out of EIMS and provide them to Dominion to facilitate the creation of ballot artwork. Remember that I mentioned EIMS is responsible for the creation of ballot types and organization of jurisdictions and candidates, but these reports are generic and would be used by any and all voting systems currently certified for use in California. EIMS has used to check in voters at our vote centers, but there's an air gap between these check-in systems and our ballot printers and accessible ballot marking devices. EIMS provides no tabulation of ballots and receives no feedback from the Dominion voting system. I'd like to thank you for your consideration of this item today and would be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time. Thank you.
Any questions? I've got a couple. So you mentioned DFM is licensed in the state, and there's one other. Who's the other one?
The other one is DIMS, which is DIMS. I'm not off the top of my head. Can't remember what the acronym is.
So DFM and DIMS, all 58 counties use one or the other. Is that correct?
Correct, and over 80% currently use DFM. DIMS was actually sold by their original developer after the 2020 election. They stopped support. It was picked up by Runbeck and is currently supported, but counties are moving away from DIMS, and that's why I do not consider it a current option for us to consider at this time.
Understood. Thank you. Anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item?
Good morning, Board. My name is Tammy Richardson, and I reside in District One. And while I understand that there were negotiation issues with DFM, and it was out of, I'm assuming out of Kuss's hands, I would have liked to have been notified of the companies that we're using and be able to have time to do some research and have, I feel like on this last minute, once again, your hands are tied. We're in the middle of an election cycle. This seems to be an ongoing thing for us. We just did this a couple minutes ago with printing. And with the time constraints, it takes away public time for research, public time for debate. And so it would have been nice to have this brought up in an earlier time, that we could have a little time to talk about it because now you need to make a decision. Also, I would just like to urge you to not go into a five-year contract because as things develop and more companies come onboard, you're going to tie us up into something that may be more cost-effective for the county. And also, we would be missing out on a bidding process to make it more affordable for Fresno County. Thank you.
Good morning, Board. I live in District Two. My name is Cindy Fukuyama, and I understand that you have no choice right now, and really, Mr. Kuss doesn't either, as this is the only approved one by the state that's really functioning at a good level right now. I am concerned that we might be missing an opportunity in the future, in the next year, to maybe do a cost analysis with other companies that might be approved or come onboard with the state. I think a million dollars or close to a million dollars is a lot for a three-year contract. But you're kind of over a rock and a hard place because there's really no other way to have it go forward. I'd like to just have you consider maybe the possibility of doing a one- or two-year contract to see if there are other companies that come down the road, and there's a lot of stuff going on with technology these days. And I just think, you know, a year or two from now, we might want to look at what's out there. And I just thank you for the time.
Thank you. My name is Sean Berdine, and I would like to once again preface that within my numerous hours of observing our local elections, I've only had positive interactions with county staff and employees, including Mr. Kuss himself, and all staff within our current office, the vote centers, and especially our elections warehouse. Having said that, Election Day for the primary is March 19th, which means ballots will be sent out through the mail starting on February 19th. And votes can be counted as early as that day. There will be an additional seven days after potentially accepted ballots through mail, and there will be a 30-day period after Election Day to count and verify the election. There is no possible timeframe, you know, to really consider options for this primary. I understand that. But I do think that there deserves to be a strong conversation about what we do for the longer term. I firmly believe that the current voting system needs and deserves reexamination. I have many criticisms, concerns with it, including it's completely reliant upon computers and machines, forces the county to be completely reliant upon contracts without vendors with proprietary technology. It is unnecessarily complicated, and ultimately, it creates an obtuse, long, inefficient process filled with unnecessary weaknesses and vulnerabilities. You understand that there are individuals who believe there are no issues with election integrity at all, but there are still ongoing lawsuits across the country, and including Election Integrity Project lawsuit against California and 13 counties, including our own of Fresno, that is still moving forward through the courts. The issue is still ongoing, and we, as a county, should honestly consider alternatives. I understand with the adoption of AB 969 at the end of last year, it would technically be illegal for the county to not use a vendor as described in this agenda item, and I am not going to push the board to take that on at this time. But I will say that you should, and it deserves to be taken on. It was fast-tracked through the entire process of California last year in Sacramento precisely because counties were having these sort of conversations and deciding to move towards other, older, more traditional forms of voting. There are other counties that are still saying despite AB 969, they will continue on that direction. And I also would formally and personally request that each of you come visit the vote center March 20th, the day after Election Day, to really see the full scope of what this process looks like. In all of my countless hours of observation, I firmly believe that is the number-one most important day to watch. Not Election Day, not the days before, but the day after, to really see what this full scope of the process looks like. So in conclusion, I understand and concede that our current voting system, we don't really have a choice. We got to keep doing it. But I urge the board to strongly consider alternatives for the future, and please come and see what this process looks like after Election Day. Thank you very much for your time.
James, do you have any follow-up remarks?
Yeah, just a couple points of clarification. I did call this a five-year contract, but it does follow the general county policy of a three-year contract with two one-year extensions currently included as part of the base contract. It is our intention at the end of that three years to be looking at what our options are, as I mentioned here. I think that lines up pretty well timewise for that certification process for any potential new systems coming into place, and will put us in a pretty good spot. The other thing I'd like to say is that we do have actually two primaries coming up in March. Our presidential primary election is on March 4th, and Sean was saying the day after, and that'd be March 5th, is an incredibly busy day, and we welcome anyone to come out and take an observation. I would say, and this might just be a slight misstatement by Sean there, to come to our warehouse where most of our activities are occurring on that day. We do have activities out at the vote centers, but we're just picking up materials and bringing them back that day. So I don't think, that's quite what you assumed for the warehouse. Yeah. So, and then our other primary that we have coming up is actually on March 19th, the one that, the date that Sean was mentioning there, and that is for the special election in Congressional District 20, which will be about one quarter of the county as opposed to our big election on the 5th.
So James, just for clarity, two elections coming up. We have the presidential primary on March 5th, and then we have March 19th, which is the special election. Is that correct?
Correct. And then depending on the results of that March 15th one, we may also have one on May 21st, which would be a general election for that special. The other thing I would like to separate out in concept is the software under discussion today is not a voting system as Sean. It does feed into the voting systems, but there are four currently certified voting systems, means by which a voter can have their ballot printed, tabulated, and results compiled in the state, and those are Dominion, ESNS. I'm blanking on it. LA has their VSAP, and HART is the fourth option there. This is a different associated because obviously we do have our registration processes here and stuff like our candidate filing, which goes from this system and then feeds into. But there's never any communication backwards from the voting systems to this one. These are our separate items here.
All right. Thank you for the clarification. Not seeing any further public comment, and with the clarification that really this is a three-year contract with two one-year extensions, I think that's a little bit more palatable for me. I'll turn it over to the board for action or additional comments.
Yeah, just, I've been there, you know, after the election. That's probably the better, best time to go, and it's very interesting.
And I will also highlight that there was a legal change about timing of results last year. Fresno County has focused on getting our second round of results on Friday, but the legislature has put in a bill last year that has now moved up first, results must be on Thursday night. So we're going to be even busier on that Wednesday, making sure that we process all of the VBMs that have come in there and to be able to get them out into the field, get you results on Thursday night.
I'd like to ask a follow-up question, James, about the two one-year extensions. I'm confident that I know the answer to this, but I want to hear it and let everybody hear it. So it's a three-year contract with two additional one-year extensions, right? On those additional one-year extensions, that decision would come back to the body here?
No, those one-year extensions are at the agreement of the department and the vendor. So it's just an action there at that point, a exchange of letters, official letters, to continue the contract.
So it would not come back to the board, which could include public discussion?
Well, I'll tell you, you can make a motion for whatever you want. Staff has made a recommendation. If this body wants to make a motion saying they're okay with the three-year contract, but any extensions have to be approved by the board, you have the ability to do that, too.
Yeah, I have a problem with that. I wouldn't be able to support it because in the, we need to be super transparent about anything with elections, and I would prefer it to come back to the board for that discussion to make those extensions. So I will make a motion to accept this recommendation with this difference, that any extensions be brought back to the body here, which serves the public to make those decisions.
Can I add one more thing? Because I'm on a second-year deal. What's, go ahead.
Well, I would just say if that is contrary to the language that's in the contract right now, because the language in the contract right now is negotiated by the parties, provides for the clerk registrar who's designated is authorized to sign it. So we would probably need an amendment to the agreement to come back to the board if that's the wish of the board. The, I think the direction or the request is that the registrar clerk is going to review this during the three-year period. You know, you could certainly make a request to him before he renews it to come back to the board.
Well, Dan, exactly. So I don't, I think we're overcomplicating this. So during the three-year period, when we're in approaching the final year term, maybe halfway through, you'll know if this is going to need to be put out to bid, or if you're going to do a one-year extension. You can come back to the board and seek our guidance on it. We're not taking authority away from you. However, if there's other options out there, you're going to tell us, let's put this thing out to bid, correct?
Yes. And while I haven't mentioned it here, my department is actually participating as a support for the certification process. as a support for the certification process. We are not directly involved in the certification process of the system that's currently being worked on with the Secretary of State. But part of their certification process is they have to go through registration testing. And our department between elections, I hope, knock on wood that we actually have a time between elections, will be providing support as a county that has some interactions there. So we're watching this very closely, because this was a long process this year. And I do, as I mentioned, I apologize that I'm here this long, but we did start this back in March. Our intention was not to be here at this time, is just working with the vendor, and a vendor that, as I mentioned, occupies about 80% of the market at this time, and that's increasing.
So something else that we could do too, there's a motion on the floor...
He stepped all over me. I was talking. I let him talk. And he stepped all over me.
Well, Buddy, I know you're sensitive. Okay, go ahead, Buddy.
After the end of the second year, if you could come back and report to us about what you intend to do on the third year, but with plenty of time to have an idea of what you're going to do.
Okay. I will amend my emotion, my, I will amend my motion to give direction to our staff to come back at the two-year mark and give us a report on the intentions. But I'm keeping the part about any extensions would be decided by this body.
If you want that, that's fine, but the lawyer just told you that's not allowed in this contract that's presented to us today. So you would need, there would have to be an amendment. So we would not be allowed to approve it as is. Yeah. So I'm not one to give the lawyer much credence, but he clearly told us, we're not allowed to do that today. So we have an election coming in 30 days. I understand that. I thought Buddy and Nathan's deal was an appropriate deal. You're trying to put an even a greater safeguard in there, which I can appreciate. But we can't do that today and approve this contract today, as you so choose.
Okay.
Is my understanding by the attorney. Now, if I'm wrong, I'm more happy to be told wrong.
You're right.
But we can't do that today, as even the speakers in the audience, who don't want an extended contract, acknowledge our hands are pretty well tied today.
Right. You can just ask them to come back and report to us.
Yeah. You have to do what Buddy did and take it on good faith. And if he doesn't, you still, in reality, you're not going to penalize him because he's elected. You don't hold his fate in your hands because the people elect him. And as long as the people elect him, he's there by the people.
Well, I understand that.
We can penalize him in his budget, but we're not going to remove him from office for not doing his job.
Yeah. And I understand that, and, you know, it was no...
I'll be back in two years. Don't worry. I don't want my budget penalized, Buddy.
Yeah.
You know, then I believe that the negotiation in connection with this body then was poorly done, and I can't support it today.
Okay, I'll make that motion that Brian just explained.
Yeah. And based on the facts, I will second that.
Okay.
All right. Just for the record, so that motion, just to be clear, is you want James Kuss to come and present to us at the end of year two about how the contract's going?
Right.
All right. Very good. And so with that, there's a motion to second on the floor. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
All right. Passes four to one. Thank you.
Thank you.
We now move to item number eight, under Public Health, received presentation from the Department of Public Health on Required Annual Future of Public Health Funding Updates.
All right. Floor is yours, David.
Thank you. Morning, Board members. David Lucchini, Director of Public Health in Fresno County. With me, I have Joe Prado, the Assistant Director, Claudia Sandoval, Division Manager of our Health Policy and Wellness. Today is our first presentation under the requirements of the Future of Public Health Funding that came from the state of California. Go to the next one. This annual presentation to our board is per the Health and Safety Code, where local health jurisdictions must report to the board the following most prevalent current causes of morbidity and mortality, the cases of morbidity and mortality with the most rapid three-year growth rate, health disparities, and we also must provide updates on the progress of addressing issues, the strategies and programs identified in the local health jurisdictions' triennial public health plan. And at the same time, identify policy recommendations for addressing these issues. One of the things we'll also be doing with some of this funding is actually also developing a strategic plan, which we haven't had one as a department since 2008. Next, please. The purpose of this funding is, once again, to strengthen public health workforce and infrastructure. In the 30 years working in public health, there's been a lot of ups and downs, so this really helps kind of minimize the mountains and valleys that can occur with funding with the state of California. So hopefully this keeps us, our core program, strong. Fresno County's annual allocation is 6.126 million. There was carryover allowed for fiscal year '22, '23, to '23, '24. Just as a reminder, this agreement came later, when the first year had already started back in October of '22. And then to get the positions filled and all that, there was a battle with some of our high vacancy rates, but now we're in much better shape in filling those positions. One of the key things is at least 70% of the allocation must be used to support hiring permanent staff, including benefits, training, and activities that support recruitment and retention. No more than 30% are allowed for other costs. And the key thing is funds cannot be used to supplant other local city or county funds, such as realignment, health realignment. And right now, they did budget this for three-year, three-year allocation that is set aside in the state budget. At this time, the governor's first proposal for next year's budget has no cuts to this issue and no impacts to the Department of Public Health, but of course, we will monitor closely. CHIEC has not mentioned any concerns from legislature at this time, but we'll see how that goes when the next proposal comes in May. In the meantime, Department of Public Health is very big on fiscal literacy. We work very closely with our division managers and our supervisors to keep good eye on expenditures and revenues, and monitor other types of grants and funds that are coming from state, federal, and other sources, so that if there are any problems and a drop in this funding, we create the flexibility and options to move if we need to, earlier than later. Next slide, please. So, here's our first epidemiology slide. This is focused on the top causes of hospitalizations excluding births in 2021. As you can see, top three from bottom to top, septicemia is at the top, COVID-19, then hypertension, and secondary hypertension. Of course, patients who are hospitalized can have several diagnoses. Of interest is the state, top three were very similar. So, we're very similar to the state of California on that. The next slide is the leading cause of death among residents in '21. As you can see, the top are heart disease, COVID-19, cancer. COVID cases and deaths are counted in accordance to state guidelines. COVID death certificates were evaluated by our Department of Public Health staff to ensure COVID was listed as a cause of death from the doctor or a contributing factor, and a positive PCR lab test was on file. So this all follows state guidelines. So what's interesting, looking at the top three deaths in California, it was also heart disease, cancer, and COVID-19. So once again, we align very closely the state. And those also from the state comes, the data comes from the National Vital Statistics Systems. Next slide. So then the state also likes us to cover three-year growth rate of what's causing the mortality. And of course, COVID, there was no cases in 2019, so that's why it's not, you don't see it on the list, but we make a note here on the right. But some of these are not really surprise. Drug overdose and homicides have gone up in the last three years, from 2019 to '21. Next slide. The other thing we need to highlight to our board are health disparities. So this slide focuses on some of the diseases and illnesses that were, impacted the black population much higher than other race and ethnicity groups in Fresno County. So when you look at age-adjusted mortality, you're seeing HIV, STDs, sepsis, cancer, cardiovascular and kidney disease, diabetes, and injuries impacting the black population much higher than other race and ethnic groups. Infant mortality rates exceeding the Health People 2030 target, and the incidence for gonorrhea, chlamydia, congenital syphilis, and HIV/AIDS at a much higher. I do want to highlight during this slide, some of the public health programs that are working on this. We do have an agreement with Black Wellness Prosperity Center to increase STD screenings, especially with the black population. We do have our Black Infant Health Program that's housed in West Fresno, that focuses on preterm birth rates and infant mortality. We have home visitation programs, not only in public health department, but also community-based organizations that visit pregnant women to, once again, try to improve birth outcomes. And we also have contracted out some doula programs that work with the black population to, once again, improve birth outcomes and improve preterm birth rates. We've also put resources into increasing syphilis investigations of pregnant women and women of childbearing age, so we could bring the rates of infant syphilis down to, congenital syphilis is the official thing. We added this vacancy report just to see kind of the vacant, issues we were dealing with in '23. As you can see, the high back in March was 22% vacancy report, and we've got it down to 18.5 in November, and then it went to 19.2 in December, and this passed, currently we have it closer to 18%. So it has been a struggle, but we do want to thank you because your agreements that have increased salaries and the health benefits will help us get this further down. All right, now we'll highlight some of the Future of Public Health programs. This first one you know about is the Rural Mobile Health Program, which offers medical services at no cost to ag workers and residents of rural communities in Fresno County. You can see from December 22 through end of December '23, 94 events completed and over 3,900 patients provided with medical services. Then we have a partnership with the Buddhist, she's, I can never say it, you guys can read that one. It was added in May '23 to provide mobile vision services through their mobile unit as well. And then our epidemiology team is reviewing the data to evaluate if local emergency department usage at area hospitals has decreased because of some of the work with the Rural Mobile Health Program. This program is also utilizing ARPA funds to work with the contracts with medical providers such as UCSF, but the Future of Public Health Funds cover administration costs for this program. Next, Rural EMT Training Programs, kind of a stepping stone before becoming a paramedic, whereas myself, I was an EMT first, and then went to nursing school. Our EMS Director, Dan Lynch, brought up a great idea to use some of these public health funds, Future of Public Health Funds, to rural and low-income areas to kind of be a first step into healthcare, to really improve where we really need a high need. As you probably heard, there's going to be a lot of shortages in healthcare, and so this is another way to get people introduced to healthcare system. So we're working together with Emergency Services and Health Policy and Wellness to identify low-income rural areas to target that would benefit from having additional residents in their communities trained as EMTs. So we're going to select a community in each of these areas, one in the west, one in the south, and one in the east, to offer this EMT program. And we're still finalizing which city in these areas. Next up is another area that you've heard from us the last couple years, is building that community health worker capacity. As you can see, we use Future of Public Health Funding for DPH staff to administer and oversee the HOPE Hub program. 35 nationally-certified community health workers. A lot of training has been involved. Once again, the training is to make sure we're all trained at the same level, all these community health workers, so they're not all over the place on how they're trained. Really, it creates a base training. Next, please. These are some of the pathways that have been met with the HOPE Hub. A lot of social service-type issues, education, and medical referrals. When you look at the top areas of education, you're seeing stress management, nutrition, and employment needs were met with education. And when you're looking at risks mitigated, what client needs were met, some of the top areas were immunization referrals, food security, and healthcare coverage. Next, some of the key highlights also from the HOPE Hub. They have almost 3,000 social determinants of health screenings, really identifying if there's housing issues, once again, food insecurity, or other social issues. They have served 1,636 clients. 89% of clients' needs have been met with 4,825 resources provided. I think some of the other good news is, once again, this was a pilot program. Want to look at sustainability. It's got the attention of other partners to fund some HOPE Hub. Kaiser recently awarded $95,000 to build a network of training, screening, and improved access to mental health care. Parler Unified awarded $600,000 five-year contract to provide navigation services to students and families on campus. CalAim has now added community health workers. Another benefit that can be reimbursed, so that's huge. And they're actively seeking other grants. So with that, that was a brief report. We met our requirement, I think. Any questions?
Questions for staff. Go ahead, Steve.
All right. You know, I love the report. I think it was a good job. And you had a lot of positives. I do want to focus on a couple areas that you start talking about, and I realize it's not really contained in this report, so maybe I will just express them, and then you and I can have an offline conversation, and then I can report back in board comments in the future. So, and again, so I'm not expecting you to have the answers to my questions right now. But do we have any times, you talked about COVID deaths. Now, here's my problem. I feel responsible, as an elected official, to do my best to understand what we experienced in COVID, so that we will never go through that again, as far as we can control that. How many COVID deaths, do we have any instances where we had deaths that were attributed to COVID that were reversed?
That were reversed?
Yeah. In other words...
I don't recall anything, but we could look into it, unless, Joe, you know.
Yeah. The state, in the last year, had some adjustments to the COVID deaths. So you saw some counties' numbers reduce after their audit of those records. Fresno County had very little adjustments to their COVID death numbers. We followed a certain protocol that we saw was appropriate that the state had given previously, and we followed that throughout the entire response. That's why you saw minimal changes to Fresno County numbers.
Okay. And, you know, because throughout that whole scene, there was a lot of, so much misinformation on all sides. People were trying to present their case, and sometimes their political case, and everything got just so meshed together. But, you know, there's the belief out there that somebody dies in a motorcycle accident, but three weeks ago they had COVID. That's a COVID death, right? I want to get completely more understanding about that. And then, any vaccine-related deaths?
Once again, I've not heard any reports of vaccine-related deaths. Anything on your end, Joe?
No, that is something we can dive into more. That is reported at the federal level, but we can get back to your board member on...
Okay. Because I've discussed this in the public before, my sister-in-law, in my immediate family, was the one that did the vaccine and the booster, and her health will never be the same. It wasn't because of COVID. It was much later, and that exposed a heart condition that she previously had. So she already had a heart condition, but once she got vaccinated and boosted, it ripped it all apart. So now she can't walk her dogs during the day. So I would be interested if we ever look at the other parts of this argument. And then finally, how many, did we experience in 2020 more death than we do in 2023 or 2017? Or was it just a wash? Same kind of number of people died? I'd love to see that.
Yeah, we'd usually do an annual morbidity report that's posted, so we can, once again, put that on.
Okay, let's meet about that.
Epidemiology team is really doing a good job. That's what I'm proud of a lot, is we've really grown our epidemiology team to answer those questions that you have, and for the public. So we post those morbidity and mortality reports.
All right. All right. Those are just questions, and again, I would like to...
Good question. No, we like that you're interested in data, so we're always good with that.
Yeah. I'd like to set up a meeting, and maybe we can go over some of that stuff.
Love you to come to the Health Department, so you can meet the Epi team.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yes, Sal.
Thank you for the report. Good report. Got a couple questions. I know that for years Fresno County has been pretty high, and I believe it's been in the country for the black infant mortality rate that we've had. And I'm glad to see that you're, you know, doing what you can to address it, as well as having a site for women and families to come and get some help or advice on how to get treated. Are we still one of the higher, have one of the higher rates in the country for the...
It has improved back, you know, a little bit. Then it goes up, so it's kind of been up and down. So there's still a lot more work to do, because once again, with the black population, it's much higher than the rest of the race and ethnicity groups. So that's why we're really focused, trying to continue to bring it down and continue it down, not seeing ups and downs.
I remember in the 80s, it was just out of control in Fresno County.
And that's why we're working with this Community Health Worker Hub, navigating the healthcare system, getting really involved early on in the pregnancy, looking at food insecurity, access to healthy foods. It's not easy in a lot of parts of our county. So those are all things. It's more than one agency, if we're going to have success on this.
And then also, the outreach that you're doing, I mean, you're doing a good job with that on really all fronts. a good, uh, job with that, uh, on really all fronts. Uh, are you, uh, do you also, uh, partner with nonprofits for the delivery of services? Who, who are some of those?
Oh, no, we, we work with a lot of community-based organizations across the board in different programs.
To get the services out there.
Different services. You can see it in, let's say, the education workers heavily with a lot of partners. Our public health nursing home visitation works with community-based organizations. Heck, even our environmental health has been working with a little bit of community-based organizations.
And I was glad to see that you're working with, uh, Zushi Buddhist, uh, Vision Services. I worked.
Glad you could pronounce it, I can't.
I was very careful. Uh, I worked with them in the past when we did some, uh, uh, senior health fairs at Mosquita Center. And the great thing about them, and I mean, they're like a, a hidden treasure here in Fresno. I mean, we put on an event and they were able to get done in one day, uh, 20, 20 pairs of glasses for seniors. And, uh, they got, all got it done within a couple of hours. I mean, and that's a big, uh, uh, economic benefit.
Yeah.
For the seniors, but I mean, they're just a great organization to.
And I'm looking at the team to recall, but I think it was early on in the rural mobile program where that was identified as a big issue and that's why we reached out to them to try to fill that gap.
Yeah, we've utilized them in the past on health fairs that we've had, so I'm glad that you've done that. So that's all I've got. Great job. I'm looking forward to seeing more.
It's a team effort, once again. It's us with our partners and a lot of work to do.
Yes, thank you.
I appreciate all the comments from board members. And again, this is just a receive and file item. This isn't something we're taking action on, but I would emphasize some of the, uh, questions that Supervisor Brandow as well as, uh, comments from Sal Quintero. As additional information is generated, let's make that available to the entire board and to the extent we can make that available to the public, I think transparency is very important. Looking back when we had the, uh, COVID tables that we put together, prevalence of COVID in the area, uh, people who were passing away, one thing that really stands out is individuals who were affected more than others when they got COVID were those who had comorbidities. And, um, so as you gather this information up, uh, with Supervisor Brandow and including vaccines, people respond differently to vaccines. So I think making sure that we put the information out about, you know, what may be out there here in Fresno County in relationship to the vaccines is important, I think is, is very good.
Good point on the vaccines. I was a little disappointed in that, you know, the vaccine rate for the latest, uh, update of the vaccine is right, around nine percent was the last report I saw. In the whole San Joaquin Valley, it's all under 10%. So it's an area that people are not getting vaccinated. So we're going to have to get more information about it, so.
Excellent. Thank you. So with that, we'll move on to the next, uh, next, this is not a public, uh, a public item, this was just a presentation, but I will say, um, at the end of our meeting, we're going to have an opportunity for the public to make comments on items that where you, you couldn't make comment, so you're more than welcome to share.
I would like to ask a question, how did we collect the data?
Uh, if you want, you're more than welcome to ask them right now while they walk out the door and then you can, but not, not here. Follow them out the door and then you can come back and address this body when it's public comment period.
With respect to, um.
Yes.
Director Brandel would be very.
Thank you. Uh, next item.
Item number nine, under Public Works and Planning, Consider Appeal of Planning Commission's Dial Variance Application Number 4145, proposing to allow creation of a two-acre and a 14.30 acre parcel from an existing 16.30 acre parcel in an AE-20 zone district.
Good morning. Uh, I'm David Randle. I'm from the current planning section of Public Works and Planning. Here to speak to variance application number 40, 4145 and its appeal for the planning commission's decision. Uh, the request of the, uh, of the application was for the creation of two, excuse me, uh, two-acre parcel and a 14.3 acre parcel from an 16, 6.3 acre parcel. The, the parcel is actually 16.5 gross acreage if you measured at the centerline of the public roadway. However, the, the original as well as the proposed parcels are below the 20 acre minimum for the AE zone district. The property is located on the east side of Fowler Avenue, uh, 615 feet south of Rose Avenue. It's about 200.6 miles west of Selma in District Four. The application was originally considered by the planning commission, uh, on March 9th at that hearing. The item was continued to date uncertain to allow the applicant to investigate other mechanisms that might meet their needs. Uh, subsequently, the item was brought back to the commission, uh, on October 26th. After testimony from the applicant and no comments or comments from the public, uh, a motion to deny the application based on the inability to make the required findings number one, two, and four was carried by the commission on a vote of six to zero with two commissioners absent and one vacancy. On November 8th, the applicant filed an appeal to the planning commi, of the planning commission's denial, the variance application. The appeal application does not identify how the commission erred in its judgment or state how the findings could be made. Does include a letter explaining the applicant's personal circumstances and reasons for asking for the variance. Staff is glad to answer any questions you may have, or if you desire, we have a short PowerPoint we can show you.
And just as a point of clarification, staff was able to make one of the four findings that, um, your board had denied in references. We could not make all four. We were, we were able to make finding number three for the variance.
I think, uh, you know, we have a planning commission for a reason, but sometimes they don't get all the information or get confused. And one of the things I think they were confused about was the two acres is already not being farmed. It has not been farmed. I don't think they quite understood that. And the fact that you can make all the findings, I think they got stuck on, you know, AE 20 and that, and that piece itself wasn't really big enough to make that jump without making the findings. And I don't think they were able to see or understand all the information, so. I don't really have a problem with this. I'd like to, if there's any public comment, I'd like to hear it.
So with that, anyone in the public is the, is the, uh, appellant here, the person who's appealed this to our board? Is there a representative here? Please, uh, state your name and, um, thank you for being here.
Hi, good morning, um, members of the board and county staff. My name is Elvia Lopez. I am here on behalf of Central Valley Engineering and Surveying, um, also representing, um, Rosemary Cordero, who is also present here today. She is the owner of the property. And, um, yeah, we are proposing to sprit, uh, split off an approximate 2.1 acre parcel off of an existing, um, give or take 16.4, um, acre parcel. Uh, the purpose of the split will be to, uh, gift the approximate 2.1 acre parcel to Rosemary's daughter. We feel that, uh, this is something that, um, is quite doable as similar splits have happened in the area with the same AE 20 zoning, um, actually quite recently. Uh, so, um, we, um, are here and open for any questions.
I, I have a question for you.
Jako has a quick question.
What you stated is different than our, our report. So the lady next to you is the owner of the property?
Yes.
Of the whole 16 acres?
Yes.
Okay, because in our report, it doesn't have her name listed. And if I understood you correctly, then she wants to, to cut this property out for her daughter?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I think this property previously had a mobile home on it that was removed. Is that correct? So it's now ready, that parcel to build a house on?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, no, I don't, uh, board, I, I don't have any problem with this at all. Uh, I'm ready to make a motion. You can't find all four findings?
We could, we could find finding three, but not one, two.
Right.
So extraordinary circumstances, substantial property, right? And consistency with the general plan where the finding staff was not able to make.
Right, but it's, this, uh, we could use extreme circumstances as a, as a reason to approve it.
Certainly, the, the board has the ability to articulate the findings and certainly can go forward and do that if they so choose.
Which is what I'm, what I'm doing here. So that's my motion.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Anyone else in the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion. I'll bring it back. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We now move to item number 10, under Public Works and Planning, Consider Appeal of Planning Commission's Dial of Unclassified Conditional Use Permit Number 3770, proposing to allow an unmanned freestanding 100-foot tall monopole co-locatable wireless telecommunications facility on a three-point acre parcel within the AE-5 zone district.
And before you begin, so I think I may need to report out and county council can help me on this. So, um, Verizon did reach out to me and I had a Zoom call with them, uh, but I also have, uh, a lot of communications and have had conversations with representatives who live in the Dunlap as well as Squaw Valley area too. So, um, I'm just, out of an abundance of caution, I wanted to report that. Are we sitting in a quasi judicial fashion on this one?
Yes.
Were there any other communications that board members had with, um, either, uh, individuals from Squaw Valley, Dunlap, or from Verizon? Now, just, it's important to report out. Okay, so it's just me. The floor is yours again, staff, so please introduce this item to us.
David Randle, once again. Uh, so CUP 3770 was considered by the planning commission on October 26th. The project is, uh, proposes the development of a 100-foot tall, um, monopane cell tower located on the northwest corner of Boren Lane and Elwood Road, approximately 1.7 miles north of Squaw Valley in District Five. Testimony was presented by the applicant and three members of the public speaking in opposition. The applicant noted the facility will have enhanced 911 facilities or capacities. Um, any emissions generated by the cell tower are regulated by the FCC. The placement of the cell tower was deemed by them as ideal for the community and co-location on the nearby PG&E towers was, was considered, but is not feasible. Members of the public speaking in opposition noted the mailed notices did not allow them adequate time for review and comment, uh, on the subject. The height and placement in the valley will fall to, uh, will fail to sufficiently serve their population. Subsequently, a motion to adopt the mitigated, mitigated negative, excuse me, the mitigated negative declaration for the project was, and approved. The application failed on a vote of three to four with two commissioners absent. The subsequent motion to deny the application based on the proposal, uh, excuse me, um, the, yes, the, the motion to deny the application, uh, based on the proposal, uh, is not adequate for the neighborhood, carried on a vote of four to three with two commissioners absent and one vacant. On October 27th, the applicant filed an appeal to the planning commission's, uh, denial of the variance application. The appeal application states, the appeal is due to the, uh, quote, "CUP application being in substantial compliance with the planning code and recommended for approval by the planning commission, denying for reasons of health and safety and public opposition, which is not in con, in conformance with the code," unquote. Uh, additionally, recent comments, uh, on the project have been received from the public and been made available to the board and the public. Staff is glad to answer any questions you might have. We also have a short, uh, PowerPoint if you so desire.
Well, I think, um, I personally don't need to, uh, hear, uh, or see PowerPoints because I'd like to hear from the public as well as the applicant. But before we get to that, so finding three, uh, which the planning commission was unable to make, that is that the proposed use will have no adverse effect on abutting property and surrounding neighborhood or the permitted use thereof. I assume that that statement is a pretty general statement. So the body that sits, um, if they, if, if they do believe this would have some type of adverse effect on abutting properties, it could even be aesthetics. Is that correct? Or is that not allowed?
That's correct, uh, within the frame. There are some restrictions with respect to, um, you know, the, the.
Radio frequency.
Radio wave, uh, things that you can't use that as a basis, uh, because it's preempted by federal law.
Yeah.
But otherwise, the board sits with broad discretion, uh, to issue a conditional use permit.
Perfect. Thank you for that, uh, clarity. Really appreciate the presentation. Since this is an appeal, um, we're going to do things a little bit different. I'm going to have, I'm going to ask that the, um, applicant or the person who's appealing the denial of the planning commission to come up first and, uh, they're going to, I'm going to give them, uh, some extra time to, uh, present, uh, information to this body. And, uh, then from there, I'm going to open it up to the public generally to make comments. And then at the end, I'm going to allow the, um, applicant to make any, uh, final comments and then we're going to close that public portion. So county council, does that sound reasonable? So with that, we're going to ask, I'm going to ask the appellant to come forward. Um, so representatives from Verizon, now is the time to come forward and make comments.
Hello, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Michelle Fernandez with SAC Wireless on behalf of Verizon Wireless. I have a team of experts here today to answer questions. We have Verizon Wireless Radio Frequency Engineer Walt Coles and outside counsel with Mackenzie and Alberton LLP, Paul Alberton. We have a short presentation, uh, PowerPoint presentation prepared to discuss details of the project if you are willing to see and hear it. The main reasons, uh, for the site are to bring improved phone call coverage to underserved areas, provide safety for the community, especially at times when the network is overloaded, and provide emergency services with tools to run operations appropriately. We have also provided a complete appeal package with statements from Radio Frequency Engineer Walt Coles, a letter from counsel Paul Alberton, and an extensive list of alternatives. We agree with staff that this site is important for public safety and communications and we hope you agree with staff recommendation to the planning commission to grant Verizon Wireless's appeal and approve the proposed project. May I present my PowerPoint presentation?
Yeah. Okay.
I'm sorry, I was having a sidebar with my deputy.
Uh, my PowerPoint presentation.
Okay.
Sent in. Yeah. Yep.
Thank you. Valley facility located in the northern area of Squaw Valley, California. Thank you for this opportunity to speak about our project to the board of supervisors. And again, we have our experts for any questions.
Uh, Verizon started this project three years ago. Verizon Wireless investigated 25 locations and designs and the planning commission was held on October 12th, 2023. Today, we are here for the appeal hearing. We're going to go over the facility design. Verizon Wireless is proposing a 100-foot tower camouflaged as a pine tree. This is thoughtfully designed to minimize any impact on the surrounding area. The tower and equipment will be enclosed within a 900-square-foot lease area surrounded by an eight-foot chain link fence with slots. Along with equipment cabinets, a diesel generator to provide continued service during power outages and emergencies, this design is co-locatable, meaning this tower has room for other carriers and antennas. Here are some photo simulations of what the tower will look like. A view west along Elwood Road, east along Elwood Road, and at the northeast at intersection with Boren Lane. On this slide, you can see the coverage map before the proposed facility or the service that is existing. The closest Verizon facility is 2.2 miles southwest and is exhausted in capacity, meaning the lack of strong reliable dominant signal degrades network performance resulting in unreliable service, particularly during busy hours. This affects the reliability of Verizon Wireless service for residents, workers, and visitors as well as for critical communications with emergency service. as well as for critical communications with emergency service personnel. There is current service in the general area, but it is being affected by increased demand of the network, more household devices that require service for household, more work-from-home and school-from-home activities participating on the network. This picture and this data can be shown here and further explained by radio frequency expert Walt Coles. Ultimately, this map shows the lack of coverage. The green color indicates in-building coverage using your devices in your home. Yellow indicates in-vehicle coverage, and red indicates outdoor coverage. There is a gap in in-building and in-vehicle coverage around East Elwood Road and surrounding vicinity. The gap in service and lack of dominant signal is apparent here and compromises network performance, which of course is not ideal in emergency situations when everyone is trying to utilize wireless services to call loved ones and contact the authorities. With community residents and visitors occupying this area with multiple connected devices per home, this can be a frustrating concern. Now, this slide shows the improved service to Elwood Road and the surrounding areas. There is a complete lack of reliable in-building service in the vicinity and a lack of reliable in-vehicle service along local roadways, including Elwood Road. The new proposed facility will address the lack of reliable coverage and increasing user demand on the network. The proposed facility will provide new reliable Verizon Wireless service in East Elwood area north of Squaw Valley and for 10 square miles. The new facility will improve the current slow data speeds and compromising voice calls. This map again shows the new reliable Verizon Wireless service for local residents, visitors, and community. An engineer with Waterford Consultant confirms with RF exposure report that exposure anywhere at ground level will only be 9.3%. That's over 10 times below the FCC's public exposure limit, and because it complies with FCC guidelines, a denial on the project based on RF exposure is preempted by federal law. Verizon reviewed 25 alternative sites, and you can see that list here. All of these properties either did not meet the service objectives needed due to location, elevation, terrain, and/or had unresponsive landlords to letters and calls. As you can see on this map, all of these alternatives were investigated were around the area of the proposed project parcel. The proposed project parcel had interest, and their parcel met the service objectives and is compliant with the county code. Aside from benefiting the community's wireless needs, the proposed facility satisfies all requirements of the Fresno County Ordinance Code, including the findings for an unclassified conditional use permit. Verizon abides by the setbacks. Site location is in an AE zone, agricultural zone, and there is space on the tower for future co-location by another wireless carrier. This ability to co-locate is encouraged by the county's wireless guidelines. Also, SEQA mitigated negative declaration confirms that there is less than significant impacts with mitigation. It was not clear what the commissioners were exactly denying on the project. A project that is not appropriate for the neighborhood does not come with substantial evidence or relay what is needed for a project in the neighborhood. This project complies with the code, is compliant within its design, and provides the needed service for the community. There's a PG&E transmission tower on the same parcel, another utility structure in this neighborhood on the same parcel. So the parcel is a large 3.9-acre parcel, and Verizon is proposing a 900-square-foot lease area that is not invasive to this parcel or the neighborhood. It was stated in the denial that it's not consistent with the residential neighborhood and single-family residents located throughout. However, again, this project parcel is Zoned AE5, exclusive agriculture. There is undeveloped forested rangeland to the west of the project parcel, and we feel the denial was not based on the code requirements. As Verizon has met those requirements, therefore, this project does not warrant a denial. In conclusion, the proposed facility will provide new reliable service coverage on Elwood Road and Squaw Valley for 10 square miles to ensure increased wireless coverage, enhanced capacity capabilities, and improved student access. This facility complies with all county of Fresno requirements for approval while providing reliable service to citizens working from home, students, emergency services, and the general community of Squaw Valley. Today, we are asking the Board of Supervisors to support the staff recommendation for approval, and we urge you to grant Verizon Wireless's appeal to approve the proposed facility. Myself, Paul Alberton, and Walt Coles from Verizon Wireless are here to answer any questions. Thank you for this opportunity to present our project.
You still have more time, so you're welcome to add anything else that you think is pertinent.
Good morning and thank you. Paul Alberton, outside counsel for Verizon Wireless. Thank you so much for listening to us. Given that you've given us the opportunity for rebuttal, Chair Maxig will just reserve the rest of our time for rebuttal unless you all have questions and try and save some of your time this morning.
I've got a couple of questions real quick, and these are, these are general. And I'll, I'll state that my office has received numerous emails from different individuals. So a couple of quick questions I have. When I spoke with Verizon representatives last week, I suggested that they reach out to Cal Fire, Sheriff's Department, and even Kings Canyon Unified to see if the school district, Cal Fire, or the Sheriff's Department could identify a need. Because I believe Verizon in the past has been preferred carrier when it comes to public safety services. So do you have letters of support for this project from either public safety entities, educational institutions, anything, anything like that that you can share?
Paul Alberton, again, outside counsel. We were a bit taken aback by the extensive letter that you received yesterday, the late mail, the extent of apparent concern by the community being voiced today. We did reach out, but we haven't received any, any response so far, but we frequently work with the county information services office to determine where they've got problems with the network, particularly for county employees, and we, at the, when we're done with today, it's possible maybe that's something you would ask us to, to follow up on before you make a decision.
Sure, very good. And then also, letters of support for this project, I would hope that at least the property owner who potentially is allowing for you to locate there, did they send a letter of support just talking about, you know, the importance of connectivity? Do you have other entities, residents out there that are businesses that are in Squaw Valley that are, that are supportive of this?
Verizon Wireless will commit to and exercise community outreach. We didn't do that so far, and again, is something that we could do. We frequently find that when we reach out to our customers, we do get quite a bit of response, substantial response regarding the, the need for, for connectivity. We did do additional work on the, confirming the significant gap, conducting drive tests through Elwood Road, showing that over 60% of the, of the roadway has less than sufficient signal for somebody walking on the street. We also submitted information called true call data, which is data directly from the phones that shows an absence of signal in the whole area. So we're, we're very confident about the lack of Verizon Wireless service in the area, and we're also very confident about our alternatives analysis, but I can address that in the rebuttal.
Not a problem. And then one last question before I open it up to the public portion, and we hear from representatives. I know there are certain things we can't take into consideration, specifically this project and the radio frequencies that it emits. But I went back and I started doing studies. Is there anyone here who can talk about radio frequencies generally that are here today? And the, the reason I raise that up is, I read several reports that actually identify one of the greatest emitters of radio frequencies is the sun. And, and the sun at different times emits by an order of magnitude several times more than, you know, any, any cell towers. But again, these are different reports that I've, I've read, and so I don't expect you to specifically speak about that, other than if there's an expert, if any one of you are an expert when it comes to that, because I know that there are some concerns, and one of my goals is to try to allay those as much as possible to the extent that that can be done.
Walt Coles is our RF engineer. The Waterford Consultants, the people that, independent consultant company that determined that the site would be compliant and that anywhere on the ground, the RF emissions would be less than 1/10 of what's allowed by the FCC. They are not here today. I can tell you, perhaps for lack of imagination, I've been doing this for 40 years, and the, the Marin County Board of Supervisors put together a report that showed, as you're suggesting, that the RF emissions from the sun are 135,000 times higher than that would, you would experience at the base of a cell tower. And I just, if I may add, what I think is a salient point, and that is that, that the phones themselves have to talk to the tower, so it's not just a one-way thing. And these are regulated, so they can't put out more than 23 decibels of RF exposure at any time. The phones are designed so that they can ramp up 1,000 times in energy. If a tower is nearby, I'm getting excellent 5G service here. I'm getting eight times the amount of broadband here than I would get at, at the, on Elwood roadway. If it has, if this phone had to reach three miles to get to a tower, it ramps up to 100% if it's held five meters from the house, five millimeters from the, from the head, to 100% of the FCC standard. If I've got a tower nearby, it ramps down 1,000 times. So people forget that the, there is exposure from the tower, but there's also an equal exposure coming from the phone to talk to the tower. That's the importance of having a network that, where the towers are close to the end user, where the phones aren't struggling to talk to the tower, and, and it improves the overall signal reliability, data throughput. I hope that's helpful, but I'm, we do not have the RF exposure engineer here. We can do that in the future if you think that's important.
Not a problem. So with that, you'll have an opportunity to, you know, to offer up some follow-up comments. So at this time, I'm going to open it up to the public.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the public wishing to speak in favor or against? And here's, here's what you need to do. I would ask that you just feel free to line up, and if you hear someone who kind of is saying the same comments that you wanted to make, you're more than welcome to say ditto. I would love to have as much new information as possible. So just state your name, and you can have up to three minutes, but I would encourage you to be as succinct as possible so we can hear from, from as many representatives from the public as possible. The floor is yours.
Good afternoon. My name is James Ramirez, the applicant of the property. Thank you for this opportunity to the Board of Supervisors, as well as any public interest that may be attending. Today, I'd like to discuss some of the pertinent details regarding the prospective tower, cellphone tower construction on my property, 1830 Elwood Road. I'd like to hear from the governing board as to what specific reasons are that delayed or halted this project development. It's my current understanding there are no laws as of now and zero code violations or government regulations that have been violated or even acknowledged. In the past few weeks, I've been approached by what I consider to be unhinged neighbor that simply doesn't like the idea of me assisting my community, the county of Fresno, and ultimately the state of California by utilizing my personal property to build a much-needed infrastructure. It is also my understanding these project cell phone towers specifically have been vetted time after time, meaning the home value, adverse medical effects, and anything else that has been raised as a concern. My interpretation of the laws of the governing board, as well as any additional regulatory authority, therefore, would have no legal basis to make such regulatory decisions regarding this matter. There are currently tens of thousands of these projects being approved and have been approved over the better half of the last two decades. I live in a remote section of Fresno County. I'm well within my right to have such a project approved and erected. The simple fact that the board has halted a critical infrastructure project of this magnitude based off a neighbor that has provided nothing short of ridiculous, unfounded, non-factual information from Googling around the internet has made me deeply concerned. Having lived in this community for over three generations, let's be mindful today of societal differences and understand just because someone doesn't like it or someone thinks it's a medical hazard doesn't make the allegation truthful. I've consulted with several agencies and representatives in all unanimously expressing me, there's no legal resource that can be taken against such a project on private property without extenuating anomalies or circumstances, which there are none. Lastly, this individual who is attempting this charade doesn't even classify themselves as a primary resident of Fresno County. Yes, this person lives in an entirely separate county, meaning their money they're making Fresno County is being spent in a different county, not benefiting us. Additionally, this individual has operated an Airbnb rental business since the inception of this property. The individual, the individual also has visited each neighbor property with a signed petition. He visited my property with a company of others, has threatened to sue me both personally and with a class action lawsuit.
Sir, if I could have you wrap up. Each, each individual's given about three minutes.
Absolutely. To the board, I say thank you for listening. I hope we can respectfully mitigate the situation and consider a more comprehensive, correct approach. Again, please reconsider the rendering of decision as this is a great potential to escalate into serious ramifications, federal law. Thank you.
I'll just keep it simple. He said, can't block it. My name is Juan Martinez. I live directly across the street. I'm an engineer. I've been engineering towers for 17 years of my life. I graduated, bachelor of science degree, have a registration number with the National Engineers Code Council for Engineers and Surveyors. I live on a mountain directly across. Now, he said anomaly. He quoted some law. Anomaly. We're talking about, can you pull up the PDF I sent you? Here's an anomaly. My house. See the hill?
You want to place it on the document camera right there next to you, and we can project it to, to the right of you. No, no.
Okay, I see what you're saying. This is a little upsetting because what they're trying to do is actually very dangerous and very concerning, and they're trying to set new building practices that should not be practiced. Okay. That's why I'm upset. Here's my house. Twenty, I'm a two-story house. I'm gonna be up here. See, this is less than 1,000 feet away. They're having some panels right here at 90. I'm gonna be right here getting blasted. I've been to over 10,000 sites. If you go outside right now, guess where you see the panels? Right in front of you. When you go to a site, when we, when I go to the site right there, to that site, guess where they tell me? Don't stand in front of the dishes. Don't stand in front of the panels. I'll go up to a mall, and I get on top of the mall, guess where all the panels are? At the edge of the building, not in the center. So when I stand in the middle of the building, all the panels have their back to me, not in front of me. You see what I'm saying? Here's, so here's, here's another one. The thumbnail, 1962, that's the elevation. We're direct anomaly. You see? Anomaly. That's not safe. That's not safe. Put the tower on the hill. Period. This is utilities. You don't put your septic tank next to the water tank. You don't put the power lines 10 feet above the ground. You put the water line three feet under the ground. There's things you don't do, and you don't do this. They would not install the, a, 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 a tower at the same height as my house. They would not have put a 20-foot tower there. Why? Because it will fail the analysis. And I sent you guys all an email. The calc's that guy sent are all wrong. He didn't re-stamp. I sent an email that were showing the, the things that are wrong with those sets of calc's. First, the sets of calc's don't have all the carriers at the correct elevation. Only have one carrier at 93 feet. Okay? And that's an operating parameter. You're gonna put how high that is above the ground. You see what I'm saying? Here's some more, here's some more people's calc's. Oh, he's got a few more seconds. Other property. Thumbnail, see, down there at the bottom. Point is, it's utilities. You put it in the right place. You don't put it at the same, when I walk out the door.
Sir, thank you. Thank you. You've made, you've made that point. I appreciate it. Next, please, next speaker.
Hello, distinguished members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Bogdan Tuturica, and I, my wife and I live at 1502 Elwood Road, about 400 feet, I believe it's south from the proposed site of the Verizon Tower installation. Before we talk about specifics, I'm just gonna make a very brief statement. Thank you very much, by the, by the way, for being here today and listening attentively to all the arguments presented. So I appreciate your time, and I'm just gonna make a very brief statement. There are many members of the, of our community that are rising in opposition to this proposal, and I'd like to ask them to silently, silently stand up and then sit down shortly after so that the, you gentlemen will be able to see the overall level of concern for this Thank you very much. I'll make just two very brief points, and I'm gonna let our distinguished member, members of our community, present their arguments. We have, we have, I'm actually very, 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 you know, humbled by the, the level of, not just humbled by the, the level of, not just presence, but, but the, but the credentials that this very fine people were presenting the presentation. So the two things I'll, I'll say, I'll present. So this is a independent company that has provided us with two maps. The first map is the Squaw Valley, the existing coverage of our, of the, of the cellphone, the existing cellphone coverage. I have a Verizon phone. I use it every day. I am chairman of the board for a $10 billion company called KPC Group down in Southern California. And I use this phone 24 hours, I mean, at all times. I have never had a problem using my cellphone. The second map is the proposed coverage. As you can very easily see, we are extremely happy. I'm very happy with the coverage that I have on my phone, and I don't see any reason to install a tower to increase some, you know, fictional coverage. Number one. Number two, we have statements from healthcare providers in Squaw Valley, family health.
Sir, your three minutes is up. I need to get to the rest of the representatives, and I really appreciate you being here. So the email that, the email that you've sent to us, we have received it, but I appreciate your comments.
I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Good morning, if I may say good afternoon. I don't know, it's 20 minutes before 12:00. But I'm sure you're all very tired right now. If I may have 30 seconds before I start talking additional.
Your, your three minutes is rolling, so just, you're, you're on the three minutes.
I'm a pharmacologist PhD, coming from Ivy League. I'm not going to show off here. If you want, I could send you a 20 pages resume of my achievements. I would love to reply to your question about the sun because I use it as one of my tiny arguments. Of course, the sun is going to be lethal for all of us if we don't take protection. Long exposure to the sun is not only for us, but also for the entire nature problem, right? And that is even for water. I don't know if you read about the latest case of this mother of two children who, for some reason, she drank eight liters of water within 20 minutes. You know what happened to her? She died, cardiac arrest because of osmosis. It's a very normal effect that usually we need it in ourselves, and she died. So before we start talking about safety, yeah, we should understand, and I'm glad that Verizon brought here some of their experts because they have to prove to us that the research is transparent and correct, not us. I was compelled to start an online research study because, as I mentioned, I work on hundreds of thousands of data of patients. So I love high-speed Wi-Fi. My computers are, you can't even imagine. So when my friends asked me to sit down and write something, you know, if it's good or not for the children, because of course they are interested to have a very good telecommunication up there, right? I said, okay, let me see it. I don't want to get involved in any strange conspiracy theories. And here what it is, I, I sent you all this. I tried to do my best. These are like hundreds of publications. Please excuse me, I didn't want to overwhelm you, so I just ran a tiny little study with plots, you know, over time and the number of increase of publications with respect to health hazards because of this EMF, RF, EMF. It's very interesting. I was really startled. So I have now 33 seconds, and I'm really, really sorry that you are not going to hear all this beautiful, interesting data. I'm going to just ask you for more time to have the opportunity to present like Verizon. We have only three minutes. I have hundreds of accumulating evidences after 2,000 that show possibility, potential for health hazards that it's beyond my imagination. I had no idea actually about this, but I'm going to read only this, and I will close with this. Please forgive me for this.
Oh, I can't, ma'am, ma'am.
FCC and NICN, they did work.
Your time is up. So as you continue, you're taking time away from people behind you. The reason, the reason we have three minutes is clearly there's a lot of people that want to speak, but thank you.
I don't think that it's going to.
The, the information that you've presented to us, we have received. And so I want to hear from others who are going to present new information too. But I appreciate your time very much, and I want to be respectful of those who are behind you as well who would like to speak. Thank you.
I would just like to close with outdated research. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman Magsick, Vice Chair Mendez, and Supervisors. And thank you for your time. I really appreciate you all. My name is Ken Koontz, and I am a resident of Squaw Valley. I live less than a mile away from the proposed site under appeal, and there are many residents of Squaw Valley who can't be with us today because they're all work, hard at work at their day jobs. But nonetheless, we'll be affected by this. So we have a decision to make, and it's a decision that we'd have to live by. One family, the Papa Demetrios', will be heavily affected by this decision as they live adjacent to the site. Our children play with the Papa Demetrios' children every other day. They know nothing more than taking care of their children. The Papa Demetrio family, like many of us in this close-knit community, prioritize the well-being and safety of our children above all else. The prospect of a powerful 5G cellphone tower located alarmingly close where our children play and grow is a concern that can't be overlooked. The World Health Organization categorized some RF as a to-be carcinogenic in 2011, meaning possibly carcinogenic. Among the health risks, also very important, is that this is a degradation of our community's character. Our children deserve and safe, a safe and healthy environment, and it is our responsibility to ensure that their future is not compromised by decisions we make today. I ask that we stand on the right side of this matter. We value the health, safety, and well-being of our families more than any corporate interest. It is imperative that we're careful here. Board of Supervisors, respectfully, please consider opposing the appeal by standing with us and representing our interests. Thanks.
Thank you. And I know that we still have about six or seven more speakers. What I would ask is, don't repeat anything that's been said. Please offer up new information because I want to make sure I hear from everyone. And you don't feel like you need to take all three minutes. Just get your, your points out. So please, next speaker.
Hello. I am Panagiotis Papa Demetrio. If you can project what I'm showing here. I am the owner of this house, and we are actually the property where the tower is gonna be closest to none any other property. Even with respect to the house of the owner who's gonna put it, it's not really close. We've been in the community, we're visiting the area for, since 2009, and we bought our property in 2020. And now we also own the property next to that. So we own two adjacent properties there. And we came to this area because of the beauty of the landscape, being there to the nature and being a sparsely populated area. And we split our time between Bay Area and this house since this is where all of our community actually belongs to. We object to the new tower because we don't object towers in general. Pro-technology, pro-towers, let's have the coverage that we need. But the Telecommunications Act says that we need to provide this wireless service in the least obtrusive way. And I would say that if you actually wanted to maximize the obtrusiveness, that's where you would put the tower. Squaw Valley is a 54-square-miles village that has 1,200 households. Compared to Fresno, in the same area, they locate 170 households. So you really have to try to get so close to a residence. The space is empty. If you, if, if you go here on the south, sorry, if you go on the west of the property, we have 170 acres properties, 340 acres properties that are really empty. There's nobody there. There are hills, meadows. Everything is empty there, and you have this street that has 30 residences. And we decided that the least obtrusive way is to try to stick a 100-feet tower 200 feet away from a house. I'm gonna be viewing actually, this is gonna be the landmark that I'm gonna be watching from my, that's my master bedroom. That's my kitchen, the living space, and that's my patio. And they're gonna be 200 feet away. Imagine if you can visualize that in 100 feet out. And I thought, you know what? Maybe I am alone. Let's talk to the people in the neighborhood, right? I know you guys incentivize community gatherings and community speaking. So we had multiple meetings with the neighborhood over the weekend. We only were given five days to prepare, right? Verizon is working on that for three months. And I have highlighted here, these are all of the people around, all of the red residences are the ones that have openly opposed the project. They signed the petition, they've sent you a letter, and stuff like that. The gray ones are not opposing. We didn't have the chance to talk to them. We had the weekend, we were talking, closed doors, but we would love to talk to them. Whoever we talked to in the neighborhood, anybody questioned the need. They feel they do, they do have enough signal, and everybody was very, very concerned about the change of the optics, the aesthetics, and stuff like that. The other thing that I would like to bring up.
All right, sir. Thank you. No, I, your time is up. Thank you very much.
When do I, can I start?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Evangelis Papa Demetrio. I am his son, and you may find it amusing that a 12-year-old has come to speak. However, I have real reason to believe that this tower should not go up, at least where it's proposed. I have two reasons for this. First off, economy, and second off, healthcare. First of all, economy. When there's a gigantic tower 100 feet into the air, bigger than anything other around, no one really wants to live there, meaning that house prices go down. So if you want to sell your house after this tower's gone up, you're gonna lose a lot of money, maybe even up to 50% of what the house was worth. My second reason is healthcare. It's been proven that radiation is deadly, and there's evidence supporting that cell towers do provide a lot of radiation. Now, this may not be a problem over hundreds of miles or when you're like at the base of the tower, but as shown earlier in that picture, we are literally on the altitude where the radiation is the highest, meaning that this can cause cancer, brain diseases, and it can usually be fatal. For these reasons, I believe that the cell tower should not go up, at least where it's proposed. So thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you. That's one of the best presentations I've seen. So let's see if, if we have, we're gonna spend about nine more minutes on this. So I would ask for the next presenters. I want to hear from all of you, but I'm gonna cut this off at nine minutes. Typically, we give about 15 minutes for public comment. We've gone about 23 minutes. So I'm gonna do a full 30 minutes of comment before we hear any rebuttal. So we're gonna do nine more minutes, all right?
That makes sense.
Hello, this is Maria Daltagni. I reside in this house. My husband previously taught, and my son. So I wanted to continue where my husband left off. We were trying, when we started to have this property in this area, we started to find for insurance for the house. Nobody would insure our house because this is an extremely high-risk fire area. So this part, this part that I, that I drew with my finger is red. This means it's the highest fire danger in this area. And where we are right here starts to be orange, but the whole area, excuse me, is under such a risk for fire that no insurance company would really take on our house. So we couldn't really insure our house. So this is number one. Number two is that I wanted you to understand how the sizes are. When you are out of the house, all of the houses are single-floor, 10 feet. Any tree in the area is about 20 feet. A hundred foot, they try to say that this cell tower is going to become a flash and look like a tree, like something that belongs. It does not really belong. It's going to be five times the size of any existing tree, naturally existing tree in the area. So when the kids go out to play, they're going to have a huge tower right in front of them. Us, all the neighbors, are going to see the same thing because everybody is single-floor, single-story houses, and everybody opposes to that. One more important thing, everybody has signal there. When we had to do remote teleconferences for school for kids during COVID, we were looking for solutions for regular internet. Our neighbors suggested, hey, we have cell mobile hotspot, and we use it for online teleconference. And that's what we use to do our school and our, and our husband, my husband's work. So cell signal in the area is really, really strong, like everybody in the area is able to confirm today. I will very, very briefly talk about the health hazards. We contacted, I might, myself, I am in the academia, working remotely. I contacted the professor at the University of California, Berkeley, Mr. Moskovich. He's in public health and family safety. He has been doing research for 30 years. His point is, you can find everything online. His point is, the FCC regulations, which are now available, are based on the networks that were available in 1996. After that, all of these years, all of the progression of technology, 5G antennas, their regulations have not been updated to conform with the dangers and the risks of this. So being in 150-feet distance from a cell tower, I don't know. I want to look everybody in the eyes, including the applicants, and say, is this where would you choose to live and put the cell tower right in front of you in 150 feet? Thank you very much.
Thank you. And remember what I said. So if you take the full three minutes, and we're only gonna hear for, from a number two, maybe another two or three speakers, and that'll be it. But if you, and something else too. The federal regulations say when it comes to the RF consideration, really, we can't take that into consideration for our decision. What we can take into consideration is aesthetics. That's why I brought that up earlier. So speak to things that we can take into consideration, and to the extent that you don't repeat things that have already been said is very helpful. Floor is yours.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Joseph Mendez, long-lost cousin of Buddy Mendez. And actually, my, my family settled in Fresno over 100 years ago. Both the Diaz and Mendez sides of family. And we are just, I'm here as a real estate professional. I'm a real estate broker and mortgage broker, working in the area. I work, I service the local Squaw Valley area. And I can, I just want to speak to the public nuisance facet of this overall proposal. And it is a major public nuisance, and it impacts real estate values negatively. And to the point of the young Mr. Papa Demetrio here, it definitely has a negative impact on value. I spoke to an appraiser yesterday, and she said, right away, I would cut value by 5%. Immediately, 5%. And that's just not even looking at the site, not even looking at information. So the, the fact that there's a tower 200 feet away from a property could have a much more negative impact on the property value. And that's something that, as a public nuisance, needs to be considered by all of you. Thank you very much. Again, my name is Joseph Mendez, real estate broker. Thank you.
What's your last name?
Mendez, M-E-N-D-E-S. It's a great last name.
Good morning, Chairman Magsick, members of the board. My name is Nicholas Cardella. I'm a shareholder with the law firm Wanger Jones Helsley, and I am an attorney for the family that live directly adjacent to the project site at 1801 Elwood, at 1861 Elwood. Now, frankly, I think the issue is pretty simple for the board here today. Can the finding be made for finding number three? And as Chair Magsick indicated at the outset, that finding requires you to find that the proposed use will have no adverse impact on a budding property in the surrounding neighborhood. And that finding can't be made. And the reason why that is, there's many reasons, but you only need one so long as it's supported by substantial evidence. And the aesthetic reason has ample evidence to support it in this case and gives you ample reason to deny this application. There is substantial evidence of an adverse aesthetic impact on the surrounding neighborhood, and in particular, my client's properties. The construction of a 100-foot communication tower will drastically alter the scenic landscape for the needs, for the, some 30 residential uses that are nearby. And Verizon will say, well, it's, it's camouflaged as a, as a pine. Well, it looks like a 100-foot artificial Christmas tree, okay? And as.
I'm gonna stop you. One thing I would ask, so I appreciate the comments, but we need to have no clapping in here because we have to respect all speakers. So, but I appreciate all of you being here. Please continue.
But, and hold your applause on this one. As my dad used to say, you can't put lipstick on a pig. And there's no way that you can deal or mitigate with the adverse aesthetic impact that this project is gonna cause in this neighborhood. And what's the substantial evidence for this? Take a look at the applicant's own pictures. You can see that there is nothing else in the native landscape that looks like this tree. It dominates the scenery. It's more than five times the height of any other tree. What you don't see in the applicant's photos, though, are pictures of how this is gonna look for my client's property. And if you look at. And if you look at exhibit C of our letter, you will see what that's gonna look like. They're gonna have a giant 100-foot artificial Christmas tree essentially in their, that they're gonna have to look at every day for the rest of their lives. There is no reason why this tower needs to go in this particular location. The applicant's gonna wanna say, we did an investigation, this is the only one we could find. If you look at that investigation, you'll find that it's severely lacking. They looked at 25 sites, half of them didn't even respond. The other half, they ruled out because it didn't provide optimal service metrics, or because it would have been too expensive. So to say that that somehow requires this board to approve the project is a gross overstatement. The board isn't required to approve the project, and there's substantial evidence to affirm the planning commission's denial based on finding number three. Thank you.
We're almost out of time, ladies and gentlemen. So I think, please keep your comments brief.
Okay, so this will be really brief. I wanna quote the chairman, the quote you did, credence goes to those with facts instead of lies. So this paper that I believe was emailed and can be distributed to everyone, I'm not gonna summarize everything, there's a lot of scientific facts in here, but what I wanna say is you have to remember dose exposure response, that's what it is, and that goes for everyone here, and anything you do, and anything you have for medications, your doctors give you that, and the same applies for EMF fields and radiation. For example, MRIs, CT scans and so forth. I'm a cancer survivor, I go to MRIs, I get updated every so much, but I will not take an MRI with contrast. Why is that? Because it gives you gallinum. Gallinum increases the EMF and exposure and response to such a thing. So these fields, I know you're not looking at the science, but think of this as well, in terms of aesthetics, for the Squaw Valley, everyone goes to the sequoias, that's probably one of the biggest revenue generators as well. Here we have an article where you have an extinct species that has come back. The condor, the American condor, was seen six sightings recently in the Squaw Valley, in the Sequoia area. Now, there are scientific findings from animals and the, and so forth areas, that these emissions also affect animals, birds and bees. So you have to consider not only the aesthetics, but the aesthetics of when people come as visitors to Squaw Valley, they wanna spend their recreation, what is that gonna do to Fresno, the economy and long-term impact? Communication is important, we all rely on it for our jobs, for our personal activities, but we have to think about the safety of others and the safety as citizens within this Fresno area. So thank you very much, and I only have 120, 1 minute 20 seconds, but not 120 minutes, so, okay, thanks.
Hi, my name's Michael Phillips. I live just down the road, less than a fourth mile from the site. I just learned about this recently. I was never notified for the first meeting. I did see the appeal come in the mail. I am concerned about my property value, the wear and tear on my road, how will they be, you know, putting up this structure? And we already have a PG&E tower on the same site, there'll be cameras, the towers are not maintained and made beautiful. I do have one not far from me that I pass by to go to work, and, like, down in town. And I have seen things fly off, the branches in pieces, and they're not maintained, they just updated it, and it looks horrible, it looks worse in fact. I think that's about it. I pretty much ditto what he said and a lot of others, I'm just not for it. I think that it's just a horrible location. We chose to move there in a beautiful area. We left Clovis to be rural, and now they're gonna put in this ugly structure with a big fence, with a generator, that will be a noise nuisance, so not only the aesthetics, but just everything else around it, so.
So a question for the remaining people in line. Is there anyone in line that is in favor of the project, or are all those in line, in line to speak against it? All right, so here's what we're gonna do, because we have exceeded time for public comment, which I wanted to do. I wanna give an opportunity for the individuals, the applicants here, for rebuttal. I, I have heard over and over again that it's a major aesthetic issue, which to me, I can take into consideration, and it will impact how I vote in regard to finding three. So at this time, I'm going to pivot back to the Verizon representatives to, to make a rebuttal, and I would ask for everyone who's here to stay, because we're gonna take action on this here very shortly.
Paul Albrecht, outside counsel for Verizon, thank you so much for the rebuttal time. I will be brief, but we do have experts who can answer your questions. I wanna begin with a quick statement, and that is that this site will cover a 10, over 10-mile area, square mile area. It's a line of sight technology. It's modern-day infrastructure, like that PG&E tower that's been there 50 years, is providing service to a 10-mile area, and you can't hide it, you can't make it invisible. You're gonna have some aesthetic impact, and we're trying to minimize that aesthetic impact, not only with camouflaging, but by installing one tower to serve a 10-mile square area that's gonna go all the way down to the Cal Fire Station, providing better service at the Cal Fire Station, all the way up Elwood Road, and almost to the, to the Welcome Valley, Wonder Valley, Wonder Valley to the north, excuse me, or the west. So if, if this is, if, if we can't approve this tower, then where? And I'll go through, I'll go through in a minute, how the burden shifts once we've gone through the alternatives to the county to actually identify a less intrusive, feasible alternative. So there will be, you will be able to see it, but the closest home is 200 feet away, and it's gonna be a tree, it's not blocking any view, and I haven't heard any evidence of view blockage or anything that's, that's gonna block their view of a particular landmark or something like that. Will you see it? Yes, you will see it. And under the federal law, general aesthetic concerns, under the Abrams case, don't qualify as substantial evidence for denying a site. There has to be some kind of obvious or real aesthetic impact, impact of views or something else, other than just generalized concerns about aesthetics. You received a very long letter from the attorney, from Mr. Papadimitrou, who is the principal instigator here of the concerns, he's the nearby neighbor, we understand that. It contained a number of SEQA concerns. We agreed to the indemnity language that the staff has offered, that Verizon Wireless will indemnify the county from any SEQA lawsuit that may arise from this case. My firm has represented many jurisdictions, and we have not lost a SEQA case with respect to a wireless tower. I wanna jump into the federal law very quickly. All of the speakers but one, the lawyer, mentioned RF concerns. As you know, this facility is well within FCC standards. The, the individual that's exact same level as the antennas, 1,000 feet away, should know that there is an inverse square rule. The double, if you double the distance, it quadruples the reduction in, in RF emissions. So you double the distance, it's four times lower. So once you're 1,000 feet away, the RF exposure is, is infinitesimal, even if you're in front of the, directly in front of the antennas. But as I, and then the very eloquent 12-year-old mentioned property values, as well as the broker. And property values have already, there are two cases, ATT versus Carlsbad, and Verizon Wireless versus Madera County, where property values are just considered to be, concerns about property values are considered to be a proxy for health effects, where people feel that there are health effects. And there's many, many studies that show that there's no effect on property values from, from these wireless facilities. In fact, they tend to improve property values. There's a Money Magazine article a couple of years ago where Gen Z, Gen Xers prefer wireless service, even to the level of education or schooling in the area, when they buy a house, they want connectivity. I mentioned substantial evidence, and, and we feel that, yes, you're gonna see it, it's a tower, we've gotta provide service, and, but we don't think that rises to the level of substantial evidence that's required to deny the site. I'm gonna end, I promise, I'm gonna end with prohibition of service. We went way far beyond the submittal requirements to show to you with graphics, maps, drive tests, real-time data from phones collected through TrueCall, that there is a deficiency of coverage, a real deficiency in coverage in this area. Now, there will be pockets of areas, people talked about having coverage, where if you're up high, you'll be able to see that Bear Valley Tower a couple miles away, but there's a lot, there's a lot of topography that's blocking Elwood Road and blocking the residential areas here where you will not have coverage. The federal law says it's not just ATT or T-Mobile, there was no comment on where that coverage was coming from, but Verizon has a right to fill a significant gap in coverage, and we've demonstrated that significant gap. I don't know if you wanna hear more, but we would be willing to have a third-party engineer look at that data that we've provided and confirm that there's a gap, if, at Verizon's expense. We also believe that we've done a very extensive alternatives analysis. We could go through all 25 with you if you want. We have to have a willing landlord, we have to have the right topography to cover the area, we can't, somebody at the last meeting suggested the Dollar General store, and it's down low, and, and we're unable to provide service.
Thank you for the rebuttal, so.
I was unaware I was on a time, but I appreciate it, I think.
Oh, everyone's on a, on a time here. We, we deal with, I think today, about 50 items, so we wanna make sure that we give.
I appreciate the rebuttal, the opportunity.
Absolutely. And so a couple, and I would ask that you guys kinda stay close, because I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna close the public portion, and we might have some additional questions for you, and I wanna make sure that everything that we do is in accordance with, with the law. I think the five findings that have been in question, I think finding a number three in general, while I think there, there are federal requirements about things that can be taken into consideration, since this is a CUP application, we have our own zoning ordinance that has findings that have to be met. So I just wanna make sure that as we look at finding three, that we're not doing anything that might be in conflict with federal law, as long as we only take into consideration those things that aren't specifically related to radio frequency.
I mean, one, one brief sentence more, and that's, we have no interest in, in heading off to court here.
Oh, yeah, and so, yeah, I understand, realize, I'm asking a question of county council. Yeah, thank you.
The aesthetic point has been brought up repeatedly. You have some discretion with the aesthetics, you have, you can't substitute just, I don't like the way cell towers look, you know, as being an aesthetic reason for not. You have to look at the specifics of the case, make a determination based on overall circumstances in that area that's specific to this case, about why the aesthetic impact would justify in this particular case, not taking it as a cell tower, you know, to make that, that you could, could or could not make that finding.
Okay, fair enough. And since this is in my district, first, I wanna thank everyone who came out here today, and I know at the planning commission hearing, I think there were three individuals who spoke, and I don't, I don't remember if there were emails or other letters, but we have children here today, we have representatives, you know, from the Dunlap Squaw Valley area who have, and Wonder Valley area, who've traveled a long ways to spend several hours with us, and so thank you for that, and I appreciate the emails that we've received. I am, I, I would have expected with, with Verizon that they would have done a little bit more outreach, you know, with the community about the benefits, the connectivity that's gonna be provided. But I think I heard from one of the representatives saying that, you know, they, they were a little shocked, too, at, at kind of the, the number of people that are here today and some of the comments that, that have been received. So, you know, for me, where I'm at at this point, I think what needs to happen, because connectivity is important, but I think not enough outreach has been done, and there might be a more suitable location, maybe yes, maybe no, but I'm prepared to defer this item to a date uncertain, just to give Verizon an opportunity to try to work with the community and either find a location that's gonna be more beneficial, or to convince the neighbors that the current location is the right place to be. I can tell you that I live in close proximity to, you know, to cell towers, and the connectivity that I have is greatly appreciated. In the mountain communities, we need to have the best connectivity possible. I asked Verizon to reach out to, again, Cal Fire, to the school district, and also to the sheriff's department. So I'm a little disappointed to not hear today what those, those agency had to say, you know, whether in support or neutral on it, so. But for me, I'm prepared to defer this or vote, vote against it, just because I cannot make finding number three today based upon the testimony that I've heard from the public. But that's just me. Board members, any other comments that you'd like to make?
I'd just ask if, if the board is gonna defer, that we ask the applicant to talk to us about any tolling of the shot clock agreement that might be necessary.
We looked into this, and actually, the shot clock expired sometime last November.
Correct.
And so we've had the ability to deem it approved under state law, but we would be willing to enter into a renewed tolling agreement with the county in order to confirm that we will not exercise our rights under Government Code 65964.1, until it's heard again by the board, and we can doctor that up with the correspondence after this.
Perfect.
We would, I'll just say quickly, appreciate the opportunity to come back. My next step would be federal court, I don't wanna go there, we'd rather come back and work with the county.
Thank you. So any other comments from board members?
Couple things. You know, I'm concerned about the aesthetic. I can see that angle. On a lot of the other stuff, you know, to me, it's very interesting that, this is just an observation, I might be entirely wrong, but teachers, professors, engineers, pastors for sure, they can, still capable of believing in a flat earth. And that's regards to these low-frequency, non-ionized emissions, right? But the aesthetic I have trouble with. Now, here's what I don't wanna do, Mr. Chairman. I don't wanna repeat this meeting, so I wanna hear from you what you mean by some form of a continuation. Can we do that where there's community outreach allowed, but we don't come back and do an entire public comment? In other words, we continue what, you've already closed public comment on this item. I would, I would give you that room if that's valuable to you, but I don't wanna do a complete repeat.
Sure. Yeah, so I'm not interested in a complete repeat. What I am interested in is for the applicant, in this case, to work with the community, to come up with a, you know, a resolution that is, is gonna work for all. And I did not hear today that there has been much community outreach, but I have heard from residents about finding three, that it can't be made. So I can't move forward and approve it, but I wanna give, I wanna give as much support to Verizon as possible, because what they're attempting to do with connectivity is very Any other comments from board members?
I'm gonna comment. I like Supervisor Brenda, I do not wanna repeat of today. I think the multitude of people that have come out want a ruling from this body, I don't think it's fair to make them do it twice. Like you, I am disappointed in Verizon. The chairman gave you a clear path, asked to show the necessity for this by, to reaching out to Cal Fire and law enforcement, and a company your size failed to do that. So the people, I believe, have the greatest influence of their neighborhood. I don't think there's any aesthetic issue for me at all. I mean, they're all over Fresno, I have one in my little town of Kerman. I don't think it's an aesthetic issue at all. I believe it comes down for me, what the people want or don't want in their neighborhood. They've clearly come out in opposition, they don't want it in their neighborhood. If they're willing to face the consequences of lower 5G networks for their phones and all that, so be it. They choose that. I'm prepared to make a decision today in the interest of everybody, and, and move forward. And Mr. Chairman, if any other board member wants to comment, fine, but I'll make a motion on this. If it dies for lack of a second, I'm good. But I'm not gonna sit here for an hour, and then we're gonna punt the ball. No, thank you.
All right, so if you wanna make a motion.
Anyone else comment?
Pointing out that no action is actually action, because they would have to go to federal court to try to get their tower up, is that correct, county council?
That's correct, and the county would be defending that action.
And no action is like saying no, is the same thing.
And, and that, that action.
So is the county in a better position to have no action, or are we in a better position to make a motion to deny?
You would be in the same position relative to the county's, the applicant's rights to pursue in federal court, their action to try and get that tower approved. That action does carry with it attorney's fees as well, if they're successful.
Okay, well, again, I've, I've sat here for nine years, I've never abstained on one vote, and I'm prepared to vote today. So, Mr. Chairman, it's your district, I'll follow your, your direction as to what we do.
Very good, and I think we heard from one of the representatives from Verizon that they're willing to work with the neighborhood, and they would not immediately take us to court if we were to defer this item for a location that would be more beneficial to the whole neighborhood. I think community input's very important. So my motion's gonna be to defer this item to a date uncertain, and direct the applicant, in this case, to continue to work with the residents, and if there's an opportunity to find a location that is more beneficial or that works with the neighborhood, that's my direction.
So I think you need a second to that.
I do, or, or someone else can make a counter motion. If there's no second, then my motion will die. And my, my, my motion dies. So I'll entertain another motion from any other board members.
Well, I'll move that we deny the, the applicant. That we accept the planning commission's recommendation of denial. However you wanna say it, counsel, what's the proper way to say it?
Well, I just would ask that the Well, I just would ask that the board articulate the particular finding they can't make, so we have a ground...
Yeah, I believe we can't make the findings.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
We're also going to need, in that motion, to direct staff to send a letter of the board's findings properly to the applicant.
So moved.
All right, that will, I think the motion maker and the second are willing to do that, so we have a motion and a second to that effect, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That's four, and I'm a no on that one, so it passes four, one. Thank you all for being here today. So that means that what took place at the planning commission stands, the denial. So the denial stands. Please, please, no clapping, please, no clapping, thank you for being here. And children, thank you. And that 12-year-old who spoke, the reason I liked you so much is you were succinct. Boom, points, lots of time left on the clock, thank you.
Possibly the only one that was succinct.
While the room empties, we're going to move on to Board of Supervisors committee reports and comments, Supervisor Brandow.
Oh my gosh, I feel like not saying anything for the sake of time, but on FC TA, we, at our last board meeting for FC TA, we moved forward with a new executive officer, so that contract needs, still needs to be signed, but very happy that we have some new leadership. We're doing a similar thing in the San Joaquin River Conservancy, we're looking for an executive officer there, but a very important decision was made regarding the San Joaquin River. If you, board members, will recall a couple, just over a year ago, an assembly member brought about $15 million for use on the San Joaquin River, and it's taken a long time to figure out what is the best use of that money. And we decided this last week to spend all of our, the remaining portion of that money, which is the bulk of it, on the River West project, which is a project that will benefit Fresno and Madera Counties on the river with an extensive, brand-new trail system, so it took a long time to make that decision, but that's where the Conservancy's going with that money.
All right, excellent. Supervisor Mendez?
Thanks, Steve, for mentioning the, you know, the new, the new person's actually Terry Ogle, so I think it was a great, a great decision to bring him on. Like Steve said, we still have to verify, you know, ratify the, the contract. There was some opposition or a single board member, but, you know, that's, he's kind of out of, out of, out of whack with most things in this county anyway, so, but I just want to, real quick, you know, the governor, I guess it was the night before last, on Bill Maher, made a, a whopper of a false statement by saying that, you know, almonds, a pound of almonds uses 1,500 gallons of water, and never correct Bill Maher, I don't think he's, can make the broken clock analogy, was saying that ag uses 90% of the water, when in reality, the environment uses 50. So I don't, I don't get the math there. So anyway, I just wanted to throw that out there.
Excellent. Supervisor Quintero?
I'm good, thank you.
All right, and for me, I just want to state, at the last city council meeting in Clovis, they approved the property swap agreement, which now allows the county the ability to move forward with the library project. So, last year, our board gave direction to, you know, move forward after everything was dealt with, with that land, so I would hope that my colleagues are still very supportive of getting shovels in the ground on that Clovis library project. So, move quickly on that, it's a top priority for me and, and all of us.
Just your camera, Reedley's first.
Reedley is amazing, you've got one of the best city managers in Reedley, by the way, Nicole Ziba, I hope you're listening. So, with that, we're going to move on to item 12.
Board appointments, item 12?
So Supervisor Brandow?
Yes, I need to reappoint Vasili Sotropoulos to the Workforce Development Board.
Okay, Supervisor Mendez?
Okay, I got three reappointments, Fowler Cemetery District, reappoint Donald Pitts, Parlier Cemetery District, Maurice Faldopondo, and Reedley Cemetery District, Maurice Tantartaball. That's it for me.
Can you repeat those names? I'm just kidding. Supervisor Quintero, no appointments? And I have two, to the Fresno County Fire Protection District, to appoint Daniel Mather to the District Five seat, which expired on 9/30/2023, was previously held by John Fur, and also to the Audit Committee, reappoint Manuel Villanova to the at-large seat, which expired on 12/31/2023. Anyone in the public wishing to comment on any of these appointments? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the public portion, bring it back to the board. We have a motion to approve, is there a second? We have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
We now move to item 13, public presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons desiring to address the board on any matter not on this agenda.
Hello again, board, my name is Sean Berdine, I, I wanted to clarify something I said earlier, because I am very embarrassed that I made a mistake, I'm very much a perfectionist, I want to clarify, I got the dates mixed up, March 5th, trying to get all my calendars set up for the next few months, got those, so please, I, I really implore you to come check it out, see how everything looks the day after election day, and just see how many ballots have not been counted yet. And as far as some of the other items that, you know, we just went over, super elated to hear about the expansion with River West, I literally broke my back working on that project, and so hearing that it's expanded, it's fantastic, same time I was working for the library system. When I fir, I first started working at the Clovis Library, like, oh yeah, it's coming in, it's going to be there in a few years, so I'm glad that it's, it's getting there, it's getting there. And then a couple other things, just real fast, because I know we're already over time, and I don't want to take any more of your busy time, I really want to thank you for the consideration you took on all of the items today. I go to so many of these meetings, and this board is consistently the one that I am, I, I don't know, just always most satisfied with, without, for lack of better words, you guys always take into consideration public opinion, always asking great questions, thank you for following up on some of the medical records post-COVID. I mean, it was a very difficult time, very uncertain times, and the best thing we can do now is kind of look back, try to learn some lessons. In regards to, you know, the, the last controversial item, I, I'm always elated with how well this board represents, you know, local interest on that, so thank you for those fights, continue to represent the, your constituents, and have a good rest of the day and happy new year, thank you.
Sean, you could not have paid this board a higher compliment, so thank you for your kind words.
Good afternoon, Chairman Max, supervisors, my name's Norman Morrison, I think I'm going to be the harbinger of many more people that are going to start showing up to discuss this issue with you in the future, but want to express concern, for several years now, we've been in discussions with county staff about trying to address traffic concerns on Sunnyside Avenue. We've gotten nowhere. Yesterday afternoon, while I was driving my son home from school, I was nearly broadsighted by a vehicle who decided I was going too slow as I turned left into my driveway. This is not the first time, to me or any of my other neighbors. I've sent emails, and I believe Chairman Max, you might have received one from me several years ago, five times a year and a half ago, I was nearly broadsighted, turning left into my driveway by people passing over a double yellow line. My neighbors, each one of them will tell you, they've had similar instances, where they've almost been hit by people passing over double yellow lines. It's not an isolated event, one of these days, it will become a fatality. We've requested that the county do something. Our street has become a pass-through for people. The individual that struck me yesterday, that almost struck me yesterday, was using Sunnyside to avoid driving down Fowler, he lived off of Fowler. I've had other people that do this, that also live in the city of Clovis. They go down Sunnyside, turn left on Shepherd, left on Clovis to get into neighborhoods, or go into the new neighborhoods to the north. We are a high-speed pass-through. That is not what Sunnyside is meant for, Sunnyside will never be wide enough to accommodate this. We request, we had numerous conversations with county staff, we've had numerous meetings, we're told we'll look into it, we're told we're exploring traffic calming, none of that has happened. We've had conversations, meetings for seven years, not a single thing has happened, other than we've gotten increased traffic, and more and more times that we've almost been hit. And it's not that we can't be seen turning left into our driveways. Example is, my neighbor was having a John Deere tractor delivered, with a tractor trailer and a 40-foot trailer on it. Someone decided to try to pass the double level, to the left, the double yellow lines that day when that tractor was pulling into his driveway. You can't miss these things. These are people who are using our street for high-speed pass-through. We've had nothing done. We're tired of it, we can't even back out, I can't walk to get my mail, my kids can't go on the street, I can't even have my kids walk to school, I don't even have bus transportation. Our street is not safe, and we would just request that county, at the supervisor level, since nothing's happened below, start taking some action, or start giving some direction to staff to do something. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Seeing no further public comment, I'm going to close the public comment portion, bring it back to the board. Anyone wishing to speak on closed-session items? Hearing seeing none, to the last speaker who spoke during public comment, I have a staff member who's in the back of the room, who's going to talk to you, because that's in an area that I represent, which is surrounded by the city of Clovis. So Brett, we'll get you some information and we'll chat more. With that, is there anything we need to report out on, or can we adjourn now?
Mr. Chairman, we are anticipating a report out following closed session, so we should adjourn, or recess into closed session, and then come back to adjourn.
All right, so with that, we will recess now, go into closed session, and we will reconvene after closed session to report out. reconvene after closed session to report out.[146.26][146.26][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12][151.12]